Without objection, we will begin the meeting now. The agenda items. First item is superintendent's updates. Dr. Mackey?
Yes, sir, thank you. And so we only have one item today, and that's the higher ed report card. There's not a presentation on it, but we do have Denise Peacock and Dr. Veronica is here. Yeah, Dr. Veronica and Dr. Peacock are here to answer any questions. So if y'all, I know a couple of you've called and asked questions this week and but maybe, and it's big document, you may say, well, I want to follow up and have more questions later rather than. But as you know, we do this, we did not, we had a year or maybe two, we did not do anything because of COVID, the changes that were in there on the testing. But we do really three things. Dr. Peacock, I think that's right. We, there's the praxis paths are in there. First time pass, or if it took one time for students to pass, how many students passed with two times or three or more. And again, it all adds up, remember, to 100. So we don't, we don't get those scores if students never pass. So what we're getting is we did take them one, two, or three more times, which tells us definitely something about the program, about how difficult the program and the test may be, or something maybe about the alignment. So that, we have that in there. And then there's a survey for candidates who've graduated, going to classroom, and a survey for their supervisors. And we look at those to see, you know, did a student feel like they were, I'll pick one out random, did they feel like they were prepared to teach students with special needs, let's say? And did their supervisor feel like they were prepared? We look at that two ways. One, if they, and I say we, we really give this back to the institutions. The intention is that they look at their programs based on this data. But for instance, if, if a teacher candidate comes out and they feel like they were, I'll take that same example, they were, 83% of our students felt like they were prepared for teaching to special needs, but then their supervisors say it's only 35, well, that's obviously a big disconnect. And so then those are the places where we have to dig in and say, what, what is this disconnect about? And those institutions, you got a statewide report, and then you got, there's a report for the institutions in your region. But every institution, we obviously, what we really need, and the way they do is for those deans and others to dig into the data and say, what's happening at our institution with these reports? So again, I've got Dr. Peacock and Dr. Veronica here, if you want them to come up and have any questions about it. But there's not like a presentation, as you saw, it's a long report.
It's 549 pages.
There's a bit of length.
Dr. Mackey, I did dig into the report, and I was one of the folks that called in lots and lots of questions. But before tackling the report, I have kind of an overarching question. Would be, are there states that have some sort of program that looks at teacher candidates and graduates across all prep programs that sort of track where they're teaching, how, how they're doing in the classroom? I've heard that North Carolina has such a program, but I don't know if there are other states. And there is so much information here that I think we, we could glean together between higher ed and the state department. But I think that we might be missing, you know, the keys. It's good to get such a deep report, but you know, we need to use it.
I don't, Dr. Peacock, do you want, will you come up and address that? Or Dr. Veronica, can I come up?
It's been itching all morning.
And I will say, Ms. Harris fell ill this morning. She's not able to join us, so she's got a lot of things going around.
We really do.
We're trying to stay separate here at the state department, but you know, it's hard because we all love each other. But yes, I know there are some other programs, Mrs. West. Now, I have not studied those programs, but I know there are some states that are looking at tracking teachers from the time that they graduate from a program and then following them through their first few years and, you know, looking at that information. I can't speak on any of those specifically, but yes, there are some programs. And that is something that we here at the state have had some conversations about, looking at ways that, you know, we could begin to do some of that as well. So I do believe those types of things are our long range plans. But at this time, we don't have anything in place for that. But certainly, you know, in education, whether it's Alabama or North Carolina, wherever, we all are better learning from each other. So we are definitely looking at what other states are doing. And, you know, certainly interested in taking pieces of that that might make sense for Alabama.
Well, my thought there is, we have our teacher preparation programs, and we're now looking at these outside companies coming in to prepare. And if this report, if this survey shows us deficits in what our teacher candidates believe that they're learning and able to apply in the classroom, and if the principals are saying, no, they're not prepared in certain areas, then when these other folks come in and start to prepare candidates, will those deficits get even deeper and wider? If the programs we already have in place are having issues? And I will just point to one question that was pretty detailed regarding ARI, AMSTI. How prepared are the candidates in those areas, which are, you know, high level policies that our board has in place? And this department is working very hard in providing programming for the classroom. And if those teacher candidates feel that they're very prepared, but their principals not, then I want to make sure that our colleges of education have everything they need from us. And then we've got these outside groups that are potentially going to come in. So I'm, do you see where I'm going with this?
I do, absolutely do.
And so could maybe the two of you speak to that?
Sure. And prefacing your questions here, when you think about these reports, they aren't just what they say they are. They are the higher education report cards. So much like a student would get a report card of how they're doing in a class or in school, these are reports that are solely designed for our institutions to be able to look and see how they're doing based on all of these different factors. So we know we've had lots and lots of testing discussions over the last year or so, and this is just one small piece of testing would be those that are prepared in an educator preparation program. We've got alternative programs. We've got vendors that, you know, the state's looking at. We have people coming in, you know, through reciprocity. We have certification based on testing where they're adding areas that are different from the area they're trading. So we have multiple ways that testing can be involved in the certification process. But for the purposes of this report, it is just a checkup on how our institutions are doing with those that have completed a program. They have made an application for certification. All the requirements were met and they were initial, I mean, they were issued their initial teaching certificate. So think about this report in that way, because that is all that it is. Now, you bring up some great points, and these are conversations that we're certainly having here at the state. Now, we are looking at multiple ways for people to be certified. So I think this is a good starting point. You know, we see gaps here. We see things that our institutions want to work on. We are likely to see those same problems if we did have, you know, vendors coming in or situations like that. So I think those again are good future conversations. They just don't, they don't necessarily, they're not necessarily covered in this report. Now, Dr. Veronica handles the survey side of it. I think she's got some additional information she'd like to share on that part, too.
Okay. Thank you for your question, Mrs. West. The process by which we gather this, because basically what I would like you to think about is these are perception data that we get from the administrators who supervise the in-service teachers. So it is true that sometimes in-service teachers can rate themselves higher than the administrators. Because let's face it, who's going to say, I don't know? They're all going to say, I know. But from the point of view of the administrator, they're saying, perhaps this teacher is emergent or this teacher needs remediation in this particular indicator. And the data will shift based on the question asked. So in looking at the perception data that we gather from the field, this data only applies to graduates from an approved EPP in the state of Alabama. So we filter out those, they don't even complete the survey. Because once the question, once they get to the question that says, which institution did you graduate from? If they graduated from an outside institution, outside of Alabama, it stops them. The survey stops them. So we are gathering data that's only specific to the graduates from the state of Alabama. Now, when it comes to the particular question that you asked about AMSTI, ARI, and all of that, new teacher is being asked, did your institution prepare you enough to know about these initiatives in the state? They can say yes, or they can say no, you know, depending on their comfort level. The administrator on the other side, because he or she is the one that supervises and knows whether a first-year teacher knows anything about ARI or AMSTI, their perception would be different. And so my take on it is, if we're going to utilize data the way it's supposed to, when the EPPs get the data and they go to those policy questions or any other question, it would inform them so that the professors in teaching can unpack the Alabama standards or the initiatives and engage their students in these conversations and expose them to what the state has to offer, which are online, you know, and accessible to every professor and everybody that wants to see. So that's my take, and that's what the data shows. So there, if there is a disconnect, it's because one perception from the teacher's point of view is, I'm good. But the administrator says, not so. So that's what it is.
I thought overall it was a positive report. Now, I know that some students had to take the praxis more than once, but that, I didn't think those numbers were out of line. So I thought it was, it was overall a good report. A first-year, when you're a first-year teacher, you're in shock.
You are.
Because the, the college that you went to cannot possibly teach you how to handle every situation that comes up. I remember being a first-year teacher and crying every day on the way home because so many things had happened that I didn't know how to handle. A lot of that, you just have to learn by experience. And there, you can't offer a course at a college or a university that says, have a solid every problem that will pop up in your classroom. It's impossible to do that. So overall, I thought it was pretty good.
Hi, Mrs. West. I know the report card is the report card, and it has a certain purpose. And it's different from a lot of the other avenues that we have to take in the state of Alabama, reporting and so forth. And of course, AIC has their own information. They collect that, and they follow students from certain counties and areas to see how they succeed overall, not just in college of education and particular school. But as far as the guarantee, the follow-up beyond what has already been discussed, where the school does requirement law to go back and, if there are areas where they, where the recent graduate or the new teacher, however you want to refer them, is deficient in some areas and needs some more help, that guarantee is still in place. How much do we follow? How, how much of a, not data collection, but just obviously the purpose is to assist the student, the former student and the new teacher? How much, how does that connect with the report card? And how much do we follow that from the standpoint of success or failure, the number of students? And are the institutions actually taking the initiative of that? And are the students aware of that, that they actually have that guarantee required by law? Well, we actually have several of our universities here, so I'm going to let them help me out if they have situations here. But I can tell you on the situations that have come across my desk where a person is struggling, they're a first-year teacher, and they are struggling, if they reach out, then we immediately provide that connection with the university to say, you know, we've been contacted by, you know, this particular individual who graduated from your program here, and, you know, we need to work together to give them assistance in the area of X, whatever that area happens to be. So we do work here at the state department in making those connections when we're made aware of them. You know, sometimes it happens outside of our knowledge. They certainly have connected with their instructors and coordinators there at the university. So sometimes these things happen without us even, even knowing. But if we are brought it to the loop, we certainly follow up to ensure.
Are there any?
I'm sorry, before you ask that question.
What I'm thinking about is, we know that the colleges and universities are to work with these young people three years after they graduated.
Correct.
So if that's done, and the report card is on the first year, you really would not have a way of connecting that to this report card. Would you, that, that's not one of the indicators, is it?
As far as, are you speaking about the survey or about the test?
About the survey or what Ms. Bell was asking. Would you be able to get data on those young people? Say, for example, this is the first-year survey. All right, we have a young person who, not within this survey, the second year, ends up having difficulty with classroom management. Well, the college or university is going to work with them, because we know we have up until three years. However, the state department getting that report to be able to make it a part of our data collection, that would not necessarily be so, would it?
As far as I know from the desk that I sit in, no.
I would not think so.
And that was the question. Now, I don't want to speak for.
And that was the question.
Yeah, because it doesn't connect, it's just here and there.
Right.
Because the survey is just the first year.
Right, it's the first year.
The survey is sent to the first and the second-year teachers.
Okay.
And so that's what I, that's why I was, I was itching to speak. Right.
Because when we send the survey, let's say in a practical term, there is a second-year teacher that is struggling with classroom management. The mentorship program that we have in the state of Alabama allows the mentor, because we follow the teachers for two years, and I'm the one responsible for the mentoring program. So because the novice teacher for lack of protege is in the first or second year, we continue to pay for paid mentor support to that teacher. The hope is that as the mentor recognizes where the weakness is or where the growth room is, the teacher gets better. At least for their first two years, they are able to get the support they need to overcome whatever deficiencies they came into the system.
But if it goes to the third year, because the colleges and universities, we have an obligation up to three years. At that point, you don't get that data, if it is taken along.
No, ma'am, because the mentoring program is only for the first two years.
And it seems important to me, and I, knowing the history of the law and reasons, that's when we lose our teachers so many of them, because of all the reasons that have always been expressed. You know, you get frustrated, you cry at home, and maybe it's good, but they need more support and perhaps some follow-up.
Young the second year, yes.
And I can tell you, Dr. Veronica works very hard with that mentoring program. We're doing some really great things with that, definitely, so.
And there are school systems, this is from the purview of the state department, this is how far we go. But there are school systems, depending on their structure, that go beyond the two years.
And, and I understand that, but I was trying to reflect back to her question. Would we get that data and the answer would be no?
The answer would be no, beyond the two years, the answer would be no.
Well, I'd like to comment that I appreciate this data, it is very comprehensive. And as many report cards are, the important part of the report card is how does the person who's reported on respond? And we received, I received a lengthy email from Dr. Bartarian at Athens State, which I forwarded to other board members. And he responded, and that's the important thing that questions about, is what is the Institute of Higher Education doing with the data? And Dr. Bartarian, if you want to comment about what your institution does, I think it's a model. They actually went back and looked at the three years that we talked about. I think I will exercise that prerogative, Dr. Bartarian. He's dean of education at Athens State. Come on up. We don't, I don't let anybody stand behind me. Since you wrote the email, you put yourself on the spot yourself.
Thank you. Well, what we did, and I can't take credit for this, I've been in this position two and a half years, and this happened the year before I got here. But as you know, we're all CAPE accredited. And CAPE, just to simplify the CAPE process, CAPE wants two things, that we have a plan for improvement, and then we use data to improve. That's it in a nutshell. And so we all have different plans for how we improve using data. And so we're looking at data, and this is a part of that data puzzle that we use. And it's something that when I got here and I had to help write a CAPE report in seven months, having this report card was super helpful for our CAPE report. Because this is data that we can use, the state department has helped us collect, and our CAPE team really appreciated it. So our, we regularly look at data, and so we look at this on a yearly basis. And what we noticed on one of the items on the ethical responsibility, takes responsibility for ethical behaviors, we noticed a discrepancy between what our candidates said and how their employers, their principals rated them. Our candidates were a lot more, or our completers were a lot more confident on their ethical behaviors than their principals was. It wasn't huge, but it was enough that we scratched our chins. And we used that when we met with our stakeholders, which we all do. We all have an advisory board, principals, alumni. And we said, hey, what do you guys think about that? And what can we do? And in that collaborative session, came up with the idea of hosting an ethics conference. And the idea was to talk about challenges that, that teachers face in the classroom, that they're not necessarily going to get when they're in our science teaching methods, our literacy courses. It just doesn't always come up. So it comes up there, and we started that. We, we have an ethics conference every semester for our interns. We bring in superintendents, principals, teachers, we bring the AEA in there. And we have what I call real talk, where we, we kind of hear about those eyebrow-raising situations where a teacher may get themselves into trouble. And so we talk about that, and we, it's been a wonderful experience. I think our students have learned a lot. And we've actually seen in the last few years, our numbers, if you even look at that, if you look at that item, both our, our students, our completers, and our employers really kind of rate us pretty high on that. So that's just one way we've used this for formative feedback to improve our program and to, like CAPE wants us to do, to continually improve.
That's excellent. Very well said.
Anyone else like to comment? If you do have individuals that reach back out that are struggling on what your universities do? I know you guys are in the trenches, so that is something I guess, and obviously here some folks who don't.
So at Troy, we do the same thing. So if, if a student or a principal contacts us, you know, we go out and we help them and kind of make sure they've got the models they need. And so we do that for up to three years, but we, I mean, three years is just a, I mean, that's the rule. But I mean, we'll help a student if they call us, we'll, you know, whatever.
And it also helps us to improve our programs, what we're doing within the coursework as well.
So one of the major questions, I'll go back to it, that piqued my interest was, it really had to, the ethical question. I did the math to see where everybody was in that employer versus candidate. So that was one. The other was that high-level policy question regarding ARI and AMSTI. And to go just a step further, then I just immediately thought of, are we having discussions about the science of reading? I mean, are we really having deep discussions in our prep programs about the science of reading? We have so much invested. And I recently asked a group of local school board members if they knew what the science of reading was. And it was puzzling to me that many of them seemed like they didn't know. And so this report, again, I'm back to the same question. We've invested as a state a great deal of time, effort, and money into policy law that we are expected to uphold and carry out. And I feel like I need some more assurances from the higher education community, that they fully understand what's being expected of us, that we're holding ourselves accountable, and that our teacher candidates have got to be prepared with, what is the law? What are our policies? So that when they do step into the classroom, they're better prepared so that our principals are able to hire highly qualified teacher candidates in the area of policy. I, I might be on an island here, but I think we're all wanting that. And I think higher, I think my friends in higher education that I've talked to want that, too. I just felt like this report really gave us a lot of information, and I hope everyone will dig in and look for deficits. And I know that I'm going to have a lot of questions for anyone privately coming into the state to prepare teachers, because we're expecting so much and so many. Enough said.
We definitely enjoyed our conversation with you the other day. And we're thankful that the board is looking at the report, asking those hard questions, because we're all better when we work together. So this is certainly a tool, it's one tool, but I agree with you. I think it's a very important tool. And I'm pleased to see that it is getting more, you know, more attention this year than it has in years past. I think because we've looked at the teacher shortages, we're coming out of COVID. You know, we're, we're all beginning to ask some hard questions. So it's been exciting for us that people have spent a little more time looking at this. I know our institutions were eagerly awaiting this report, and I know that they've spent time with it. And I'm glad to see that you guys are spending time with it as well. And you know, we certainly don't want it to just be an exercise that we do for no reason. It needs to be valuable.
I was well aware that there was a teacher shortage, but as I went through and looked at the different schools and how many graduated, it was shocking to see how few, just to see, one, two, 12. I'm thinking, oh my goodness, this is, this makes it real. Why don't we have to do something?
I've got one probably, it's probably in the notes somewhere, so I apologize for asking this question. But one of the questions that I had, it was, and it's early on, I think, in several of them, but it was program approval and accreditation. Programs are approved 26 of 26, programs accredited 20 of 26. Only 20 accredited? And are we talking SACS accreditation? Are we talking, what, I mean, are six colleges not accredited? And I so wish that Dr. Anavenet was here. Her father has fallen ill as well. Again, we're, we're struggling a little bit here at the department right now. We have a lot of family issues and a lot of sickness. Is she, is she in this morning? Yes. She wasn't in when I came down. But she may be able to speak to that a little bit more than I can. But we are now looking at, you know, at one point in time, we looked at like NASDAQ, and then now there's CAPE accreditation. So when we're looking at this, we're speaking at those that have completed CAPE accreditations. So we have several that are going through that process right now that, you know, hopefully we'll have that completed soon. Where in the past, we, we looked at different types of accreditation. She and I had lots of conversations about that. She and I had lots of conversations about that, and I know she's working behind the scenes. Certainly don't mind if she is in the building.
She's in the building, if you want me to get her.
We can have her address.
Well, and if you could just clarify, is, so would just be, the way to understand it, that right now, it would be 20 of 26 have completed CAPE accreditation?
That is my understanding, but let's let her answer that.
Yeah, she, she will be able to ask about it by email. We can, we can get her to probably respond to it.
Okay, that's good for, thank you so much.
Yes, absolutely.
And it does say, and I don't know the exact answer to the question, but I think that's good that heard. But for each institution, I know it's, Dr. Reynolds told us five hundred something pages. But on the second page, it does, is this institution accredited? So as you go through them, it does say on each one whether it is or not. I know we have several, I think all six of those are in the process of working through accreditation. But haven't yet completed it, so.
That's mine.
Or had not at least based on these data. And that's another thing that Dr. Anavina might be able to tell us, because of course, we're these, we're reporting last year's data here. So I'm not sure if this is last year's, I would assume this is last year's accreditation report too. Some of them may have completed this fall.
And that's fine, I just wanted clarification on, just to understand what I was saying.
She gave us a crash course in the accreditation, but I can assure you, she gives the expert figure and can answer those questions specifically.
While we're discussing this data, one of the more recent presentations we've had are the numbers of intern teachers that are putting, putting out there with mental support as those, the traditional program I went. And I think I saw an article recently where teachers expressed that they felt they were on an island. They missed the support for a teacher, that you could go find somebody, but they weren't readily available. And I know a number of our institutions of higher education are using this technique to, in personal opinion, reduce the amount of support they're giving these intern teachers who've been trained. Now, I often wonder what the implication is for future data collection like this, over their confidence, their ethics, and all those things, which really, in the practicum, as in other professions, is the implication, is the implementation of things that you learn. And you can learn the concept of ethics, but when you talk next to somebody and you treat somebody who is perceived to be an expert mentor, it does affect it. So I wonder what, because I'm very, very concerned about interns being placed as a permanent sub and being paid money, who, in my opinion, are not credentialed to do that. And I don't know what position, some of the deans that I've, I've talked to deans about that. But I think they know my position very clearly. And if you want to talk about quality product, quality product has a full training program, and the internship is the, is the linchpin of that. I don't, I'm finding words, I'm just a poor country boy. But I do know in other professions, medicine, law, accounting, and I, one of the things I do recognize, that teaching is a profession. It's not a job, it's a profession. And we elevate that in the way we, the state board oversees it and do these analyses, that it is a profession. And I think to minimize the importance of interim teaching and getting outcomes like this is a mistake. And it may be incumbent on the state board to engage in that process as we look at credentialing teacher education programs. And would you care to comment on that? I'm sorry to make a speech, but I'm prone to do that.
No, that's okay, we'll accept the speech. Do you want to add anything about the mentoring programs, or is, is how they're handling that piece? That's a little outside of our area, but you know, we may be able to share.
But it relates to what you're going to do as an outcome on the people's.
To, from the mentoring perspective, we do not, and by we, I mean the ALSDE does not provide or look at interns as full-fledged teachers that warrant the teacher mentoring, because they are still not accredited to teach. To, even though we have a shortage. So our, the people that are polled in this survey, for example, are people who are fully accredited and credentialed to the teachers, because those are the ones that are in the Alabama Teacher Mentor Program, and those are the individuals to whom we sent the surveys. So their input or their lack of expertise is not going to be reflected on this report.
But my comment, more specifically, is about the role that ALSDE in, in monitoring the teacher education program. And the internship is a significant piece in that preparation. And the ALSDE and whatever group it is, if they're permitting or authorizing teachers to work without supervision, even in, and being paid, but paying even more for tuition and being put out there on their own, I have a significant problem with that. As a professional educator and a college professor, I think that the, and the persons in my area know it, I think the deans are being deficient in their responsibility to the student to not put them in an environment where they can grow and be properly trained and implement what they've learned in the classroom.
I think your point is right.
Thank you.
I have, what were you going to say?
So what are we going to, how are we doing that? If you accept my premise, so what and where are we doing that? Because I, I read articles, or maybe Trish wrote it, I don't know, about some teachers that said they felt alone. And I would feel alone too. When I student taught, you know, that woman that supervised me a generation ago was selected because of her expertise. And she knew Wayne Reynolds needed the help. And she was there on an hour-by-hour basis to help me. If somebody, if you threw me in a classroom by myself, say, well, we're going to pay you $100 a day, and you're a permanent substitute, that to me is an inadequate training. It wouldn't happen to my son that's a physician, or my daughter's an engineer. It doesn't happen anywhere else. So how are we, as the credentialing agency, with teacher education programs, reacting to this reality that we know is going off?
I just wanted to make a comment before you answer. I'm not necessarily an advocate of that being done. However, I know there are some school districts, because of the shortage, that are offering maybe a $1,200 stipend to those that are at the student internship phase. In those districts, what I have been told is that they are still working with the colleges or the universities, where those colleges and universities are still sending people out there that are monitoring them, that they're not just turning them loose. So I think that's one thing that we can follow on. All superintendents are not doing that, but there are some, because of the shortage, that are, you know, putting that out there. So, you know, and I think two things are going on. Yes, the colleges and universities are providing support, just as they would for student internships, but also locally, in that school district, they have people that are mentoring those young people. So they're not just putting them out there by themselves. I just wanted to make that point.
And you're correct, because every once in a while, I get an email asking me to accept an intern into the program, but that's not what the policy.
Exactly.
On for the ATMPs, so we don't do that.
Correct.
But, so we redirect them to work closely with the EPP, the institution, and also to provide local support.
Correct.
By themselves.
Okay, so I just wanted to just put that out there, Mr. Reynolds.
Whatever that comes from, that's how we're supposed, that's.
Most people probably worse than that, I think.
And I agree with Dr. Richardson, because I have school systems, of course, that have shortages. And not only do they get on support from the deans, but their support is even more, on a more frequent basis. And then there's additional support provided within the school system. So in actuality, they are getting, I guess, double layers of support. They're not just sent out there and left to fend for themselves. So it may be an isolated situation that you may be speaking of, that I could say that with my experience as a previous dean and supervisor of interns, when we've had situations such as that, that particular student was provided even more support, and basically they were selected because of their level of expertise. It wasn't just a free-for-all that all the interns got this opportunity. It was in exceptional cases.
Dr. Chesnut, that's a very good point. Dr. Reynolds answering the question, and again, I am not at prep, I am at assessment, so I know little pieces, but I connect where I can, and some places I can't connect. But, but you are correct, when those requests do come in, of course, it is a partnership. It's, it's the school system that's interested in hiring the individual. It's the individual themselves, and then it's the institution where they are enrolled. And they are still, in fact, completing that internship. It does look different, and I certainly know your concerns there. But it, you know, it's not a free-for-all in the sense that just everyone can do that. It, you know, there are discussions that go on before the decisions made, whether or not that would be approved by their, their institution, that will be ultimately grading them on their internship and then recommending them for certification, if that helps any.
I think we're in an unusual situation in that we know there's a teacher shortage, and we don't want to lower the standard of the person in the classroom, but yet we lower the practice score, we make it easier for people to become certified, we have emergency certificates. We have to kind of balance that. How do we open that door up to more people who want to become teachers without lowering the quality of instruction in the classroom? Now, the interns, having an intern is better than having a long-term substitute with a, with a high school diploma.
Because that's normally all that's required, a high school diploma.
Yes, so.
Zig would have something. I'll recommend that Zig actually finish some stuff.
Yes, sure.
Zig would.
I was wondering, is there any way to let us know how many are out there that are the, that are being paid as full-time subs? I mean, that, that number could be almost nothing, or it could be huge. Is there any way of us knowing that number?
I don't doubt that number, but I think that's something we could get.
Could you please? Not, not ours. Yes.
We can get that number, remember, in order for the schools to do that, there's a process, and they have to assure that they have searched and can't find an applicant. There is a commitment between the colleges and the superintendents as to what will occur with those long-term subs that are interns.
So it comes through.
It comes through here, and we approve it, and it goes through there. And I think we have done those numbers before, but we can look at the current numbers and share those. That's not a problem.
I think it's from, I've been with a lot of teachers recently, and, you know, and, and superintendents and principals, and I'm hearing that the indication is that we're sort of moving away from that shortage. It's not as deep as it was. And so I'm, I'm hoping that that number is shrinking.
We can do the summary by school district, and it will also show the college that's working with them. But it does not take the place of the cooperating teacher man say, who's provided that support, nor the requirements that are in place on that application from the school district.
Understood.
And to go back a little bit to Mrs. West's first question, in reference to whether or not there was a system to follow that. In the past, we had a person that was responsible for recruitment, teacher shortages, as well as our teach application process. And that was an administrator, that person retired, and we worked with state personnel to actually recruit and hire to state-level recruiters. And that is a process we're going to add to them to follow the teachers that they're recruiting, and to also do needs assessments on them to make certain that we're, they're getting what they need from the departments and the system. But some of that can be lived from our recruiters, and we've hired two of those.
I think I saw that, somebody asked me a question about the budget increase for advertising, and I answered that reporter, that that's part of our teacher recruitment program.
Yes, we're doing that, and I can make certain they repeat those states and see exactly what they're doing.
And in that report that you sent to Ziglar, could you also add the, the level of support that these interns are getting? I think that seems to be the issue. Are the interns getting the support they need? The, the mentoring, the, the continued work with the colleges?
The ment, the long-term sub would not get the mentor, because they're considered a long-term sub. These are actual teachers. There's a process in there that, and I'm going to call them assurances. Do we, and I hate to do this, but do we have any colleges that have submitted one that's here? And maybe they can speak, Auburn can speak of the support that they're providing to their intern. And then there's another layer for the LEA of what they're doing, and those are assurances. That's nothing that they're sending a list to us, but they're actually signing that we are doing this. And so that's, we're trusting that they're doing that, because that is why the application was approved.
So they are, the school is certifying that they are going to provide.
And the colleges.
The college is providing their, providing support.
Yes.
And so we're getting, but we have, we have documentation to assure us of that.
Yes, they signed, yes.
But one comment I made, from one of the, one of the deans I talked to, that document has a signature by the superintendent, but perhaps, who is the final responsibility that everybody carries out what they're doing? If the superintendent signs he's doing it, where is the assurance that what they're signing is true? Because the dean I talked to wasn't aware of who was responsible for what. Because in my estimation, the school of education, who accepts these assurances, is the one, should be the one, or could be the one, responsible for the compliance that anybody asserts. Wayne Reynolds can, gets to sign a lot of things as superintendent. And some things I've paid attention to, and some things slipped through. So documents, just because they're signed by numbers of people, doesn't mean that those people understand what their responsibilities are. So are we clarifying those? And I'm sorry, Ms. Bell, I interrupted you.
No, I, well, I wasn't talking, so you didn't interrupt. But if you recognize me, I'll, I'll take it.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the questions that I have at this point, do we follow and keep up with how many of those who make it past that initial exam or assessment when they go into the program for the College of Education? Do we keep up with how many of those students, at that time, students, actually had to enroll in remedial courses in, in the colleges before they're even in the program? The other part of that, so do we?
Well, I would think that the institutions probably keep records of those, and that may be something that the department does outside of what I know. Some of these questions are bigger than, than me. But I, I know that they do monitor, the institutions do monitor that information. I guess we would need to check to see if there's someone here at the department that keeps up with that.
And we do have eight that does, we're meeting him report.
Right, and that actually, I was wanting to even mention that, because when, when we had the two-year colleges under the state board, we actually were looking at trying to move a lot of those students to programs and trying to encourage using the two-year college system for remedial courses, because the obvious, they're smaller, and anyway, it provides more personalized assistance and instruction. But the finding, and just in conversation in general, but it's not even just in Alabama, overall across the country, an increase in remedial assistance requirements, especially for those students going into the Colleges of Education. And that concerns me, especially, that was one reason why we implemented the assessment, the basic skills, or whatever they call it now, assessment from, well, just to get into the program. And increased the requirements just to get into the program. And now, across the country, it's not just happening in Alabama, there's this push to lower standards, and I don't care what. And I don't care what you say, it's lowering standards. I know the fight that we fought regarding the praxis or any assessment, and that was part of the no child left behind requirement for highly qualified teacher. And yes, you can say that, that an assessment doesn't make you the best teacher in the world, and that's, that's true. But it does provide, like, so many other professions and, um, not even mention regarding the medical, the term. If you want to become an attorney, you take the bar. It's just a fact of life when you decide on a profession, and teaching is a profession, it's a gift, but it's also a profession. And that's the other thing that, I recently returned from a meeting where we had governors and, um, legislators, uh, very few state school board members and very few, I don't know if we had maybe one local board member from all over the country. Uh, I remember Nevada, uh, legislator who also happens to be a teacher, and, and one of the things that we spoke about had to do with teaching. Being a teacher, of course, to me, means a whole lot more because she's in the classroom, she's also a policymaker. But she had that same concern as far as, and this was reflected everywhere across the country. This move to lower standards using the excuse of a teacher shortage will actually probably exacerbate the problem. Because we start out with a lot of students requiring remedial assistance. They get in, um, if an institution and, and state requires that assessment to get into the program. And then it says a lot about an institution if their students and potential graduates have to retake whatever assessment is required in that state. And that's what's happening. And then lowering the bar on those assessments for removing them altogether, it doesn't help the situation. And what they're seeing is a lot of the people who see teaching as a profession are leaving because they don't like the idea that the respect that they've had all of these years and as the increase was required, is going away. You can't just allow anyone into the profession because it's so important. And it provides, as we all say, the opportunities for those who don't have them in terms of a better world and, and education that will open the door. And the other is the fact that we need more doctors or, you know, so many people who require solid foundation. And that's where, if we continue to lower the standards, if we don't look at this problem from the standpoint of the very beginning, before they even get into the program, we don't need to recruit just anyone to get into teaching. But once they're there, we need to show them the appropriate respect. We don't need to have just anyone in the classroom. And what we need are the best in the areas where the needs are the highest and greatest. But we need to keep those others in the, in the areas where students are doing quite well thanks to teaching in the classroom that actually is solid teaching. And that starts in K, you know, K whatever you want to call it, five, if it's divided that way. I, I just, but after hearing it from so many other people at various levels of policymaking, I'm not the only one who thinks this way, and I'm not the only one who sees this happening across the country. We have got to stop lowering the standards and using the excuse of a teacher shortage. There are shortages because people don't want to move to certain places. There's shortages because people are concerned about the lack of respect for the profession. And no wonder legislators blame teachers, just like they try to blame us. But so many of the problems actually start in their camp because they pass policies like this one that you're going to have to deal with with the private, outside-of-state, online, um, pathway to become a teacher. It's a devaluing of the profession, and it, it's, we have to stop it, and it needs to stop right here. But in this beach, I'm sorry.
And Jill, I will, let me follow on to that one. Because she referenced medical professions. I'm a clinical and certified nurse. I assure you, you do not want anybody to go anywhere that can't pass the NCLEX. It's not that a practicum incapable of nursing, ER nursing or OB nursing of any kind. So you don't want a physician, you don't want a lawyer, you don't want anybody that doesn't have the appropriate training. And there are shortages across a number of professional areas. And frankly, I am fatigued and not encouraged by people saying, we have a teacher shortage. So therefore, we're not going to properly train our teachers, we're not going to hold up the standards. And that is a cop-out because other professions, whether it's rural medicine, rural healthcare, or others have ways to maintain the integrity of the profession and the quality of service. You do not want anybody to go into rural areas, and I serve some rural areas, who are not competent in providing that care. And the training and the internships, and all those are integral components. And if we diminish the function and importance of practicum, and you can say, well, the deans send somebody out every once in a while. I didn't have an every once in a while, somebody supervise me, and I went to the University of Georgia. But I had a 24/7 person that helped me to learn the classroom process. I don't think any diminishing of that responsibility and having somebody come twice a week or twice a month from the university is the equivalent of being placed with a quality subs, uh, supervising teacher. Personal opinion, so be it.
I agree with what you said here, what Ms. Bell had said and Dr. Reynolds had said. But I taught developmental English for many years on the two-year college level. And many of those students who really struggled had problems like dyslexia, learning disabled in various ways. I saw students take my class, they're trying to get to 101 in English, and they would start out with developmental, and I'm thinking of one person in particular who actually took my developmental class twice. She was so determined and tried so hard. Finally, she did get into English 101, and I was not her teacher in 101. But I kept up with her, and I would ask her teacher, how is she doing? How is she doing? He didn't know her background, but I knew her background. This was a child, when I asked him to write an essay or go into a nice restaurant, told me, I've never been to a nice restaurant, and he'd say, I can't write this. Okay, hallelujah, she passed 101. I've never been prouder. So I'm telling you, there are young people who struggle, who come to us from special education programs, but who are determined they will be successful. This particular person, I don't know what happened to her, but I have had similar students who did become teachers. And many times, they became special education teachers because they knew what it felt like to not understand. And they wanted to teach other children like they have been taught, so that they could understand. So let's don't sell these students short just because they have difficulties. They can overcome those difficulties and perform excellently in the classroom.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Mr. Markham. Is the teacher shortage task force still meeting? It's called, it's, it's a new name, isn't it?
We had one of those, we had a teacher work group, we haven't met since last spring.
Maybe we could have an update because so many of these questions seem to stem from the teacher shortage retention issue. And, and as people have said, there are many issues. Some people prefer not to work in rural areas. Um, some people have, um, feel like they need to live, live in one place, and then they have a long commute, and that's difficult for them. Um, childcare may be an issue. There's several issues, but I would love to know more about what those issues are because so much of this seems to stem from the teacher shortage. And, and retention too, right? Once we have them and we graduate them from our fine colleges, we want to keep them in the profession. And we know that many do exit fairly early. So that, that's one question I'd love to have a follow-up. I think your, your committee or task force, whatever you call it, is very important to us to really to dive down and, and figure out what are the issues that are important to those?
One thing, the teacher work group, not me, no, we've got a teacher retention task force that is meeting. That we're going to come out with a report, a plan of how this is ready for Dr. Mackey, March, April. Or this, this, kind of make the scope of a just on that particular problem and not go off in all these different areas. And the particular scope of this is on teacher retention, which includes teachers in the classroom now. Come up with strategies on how to keep the teachers that we've got employed from leaving. Because that's part of the teacher shortage, is keeping those from leaving. But, but I mean, it, it is a problem, and it's a problem. But as administrator at your local school, you've got to have somebody in the classroom. You can come up with all these philosophies and these plans, but when it's eight o'clock in the morning, that bell rings, somebody's got to be in there.
Right, well, that's why I feel like your committee, your work is so important. And so I applaud you for continuing to work with this and, and want to support you. And I hope that you will dig down and, um, and really investigate and research and then provide concrete steps that we, the board, can then, um, study and perhaps adopt, and will help alleviate this problem.
The one group, the purpose of one group is to try to open the pipeline for how we can get more teachers there. The other group is the one that's already there, what can we do to keep them? So that, we got two different focuses of those two different groups.
Well, and are we implementing the recommendations that, that teach, the first group, the teacher shortage group? Are we implementing those recommendations?
Yes, the steps that it was recommended that we're doing them. Some of the things that the board's already approved.
Well, if we need to do more, please share that with us. If you see that something needs to be, um, shored up a little bit, that maybe it wasn't as effective as you thought it was going to be, please share that with us so that we can talk about it.
What we agreed to do was the, you know, teachers that had let their certificate lapse. And then in the past, that lapse had to go through all this PD to get it back. Well, we waived that, or it has to have to go through a background check. And we've seen some success with that of some people that are willing to come back, help us get us through this shortage. And that's just one example that come out of the task force that comes to my mind.
Try to get us to serve on that, yes?
Yes, ma'am.
And it, it was a, it was a very positive change. We should have probably taken pictures, put into the certification department, these stacks of mail that were coming in where people were renewing that certificate. I mean, that was very promising to me. It was a lot of work for those that were scanning and entering and doing, but just a, a, an absolute visual of, of, you know, a very positive thing. And I, two things I can add. One, the two recruiters that Mrs. Martin spoke of that we have hired, um, they are fabulous, on fire, excited. They are out, they are going from one end of Alabama to the other right now, working individually with the school system. And they're already, they hit the ground running, and they are already doing great things. So I think that is a huge positive for Alabama, having them in place. They are, like I said, they are two wonderful ladies that are very excited about, um, being in that position and doing some great things. And then secondly, we did have Dr. Anna Bennett, she has joined us here, and she is, don't want to put her on the spot by any means, but she is our Ed Prep person, and I'm always reluctant to speak about Ed Prep because it's definitely not my area, but she's here if there are specific questions that she can help us answer.
I think you all have done a great job. Thank you, thank you so much. But in line with that, before you all leave, while you're talking about follow-up, and I'll give these to you, Mr. Markham. He did a great job in giving me a report to try to look at from 1920 and, uh, 2021 years as to how the negative one SEM would impact individuals in our, you know, our school districts. But I want to come back, and I'm going to give you these questions. But I know when we were looking at what the task force said in the spring, Dr. Mackey was saying at that time, it appeared that we had about 700 people that it would impact to maybe put out into our school districts to help us, you know, if we looked at that negative one standard error of measure. So my first question is, how many of these individuals have applied and received certificates? Because the report you gave me was great. However, if a college or university didn't have at least five people to take the test, it was not evident. So I'm thinking, if we can maybe reach back to the colleges and universities personally instead of ETS, they would know the number of people that it has, has helped. Then secondly, how many have been employed in Alabama school districts? A thirdly, how has this impacted the number of positions currently held by non-certified teachers as long-term substitutes? And then lastly, how is Alabama State Department of Education reaching out to individuals who have not yet taken advantage of this allowance but are eligible to become certified based upon this change? And lastly, what is the anticipated timetable? Because we, we know what we've said we've done, but we're not seeing how it has impacted, how it has helped. I don't have the answer for the shortage. I do know there is one. You know, when people are asking for high school graduates to serve as substitutes, that's a problem. So, uh, Dr. Mackey, I'm going to give these to Mr. Markham, and hopefully, we can go forward to try to address some of these issues.
Did we say that we would suspend that or that, uh, negative for two years? And then we would come back and see what, what we did was?
I, I think we did, but at this point, in talking to colleges and universities, it has not given us very many people. And not that I'm saying go any further.
No, it's not.
But no, but I'm just saying, we have got to try to determine what is going to work. And I think one comment was made that, you know, we want to make sure that our young people have the content. That's very important because you've got to know what to teach. But I think when you look at the practicality of what they have to do while they're out teaching to be videotaped with EDTPA, it takes into consideration the actual content and them actually serving as a practitioner. So I think there's some things that we need to address and maybe get a better understanding of, especially if we find out we only have maybe 20 people that is assisted. That's not nearly near 700.
That's your question, I believe. The resolution that we passed had a timeframe which was, I believe, two years.
It was two years.
Which may be less, one year left, we're already into it. You refresh my memory, but?
That's correct.
I think we're under, we're within the last year right now. It's been over a year since we adopted that resolution.
But I'm just interested in saying, how has it helped us thus far?
I agree with what you're asking very much.
And the phone is ringing on that question still. I take that call five or six times a day. Where I pull the memo and go through the options, pull the person's file individually, answer the questions on what they have to have. And of course, if they, you know, if they do qualify for that minus one immediately, then I, I hang up with them and contact the institution so that a conversation begins. So we, we are still working through that, and I can tell.
And I'm, the calls are coming in, they are.
And I believe at that time, we also planned a provision for minus two. If you work in a high-impact area, and the last time I had a report, we had zero.
We had that in my top.
We had zero, and I don't know if that's changed. That was about four or five minutes ago. We had zero, take that option, and that was something that Dr. Chestnut was very, uh,
Passionate about.
Thoughtful about, passionate, consistent, whether. And directed, helped us understand the needs. But we don't know, like you said, if that had any impact. We, we tried, and if it didn't work, we don't want to do it again.
Right, and I have worked directly with two individuals that were minus two possibilities. And after working through all of the nuts and bolts of each one of those particular files, it's turned out that that was not the best option for those two individuals. So as of today, no, we have had no one.
So they opted out, or you opted to not take them? I don't know what that means, and it didn't work out.
I, I would say it was just a good conversation on both sides because there's a lot of pieces that have to be involved in that minus two. The university has to, you know, they hold the cards there in the sense whether or not they want to put that person out there in that particular situation. Then you've got the school system that has to want to hire them. You've got the individual who has to want to proceed with the process, and then, of course, we.
Make the commitment to stay in that.
So in most situations, most of these people are close to that minus one. And in both situations, the decision was made to, you know, let's spend some more time studying, let's get to that minus one so you can ultimately have a professional certificate. Because remember, with the minus two, they don't get a professional certificate, they get a temporary certificate. So ultimately, they have to, you know, earn that passing score either way. Um, and it's, it's just been decided on both of them in a collaborative conversation that the best thing is to spend a good weekend doing some hardcore studying and get there.
But the minus two was predicated on the quote, "teacher shortage," close quote. And that was the reason we adopted that. And apparently, that adoption for that intent had no effect.
As of today, we have not issued any.
I can only judge up to the. I can only judge up to that.
Right, exactly. And same here. Now, if we could have someone today, then it does help. It's just hard to say, you know, we put these provisions in place hoping for the best. You know, if the need is out there, we certainly have it available now. So we may eventually use it in some capacity.
Or we may eventually not extend it.
Or we may not extend it, that is correct.
Well, I think when we were talking about it, it was never our intention to make that a permanent thing. You know, we knew from the onset that that was not the solution. And I'm just glad that we're discussing and shifting our focus from blaming to let's shift to, let's find a solution. I'm glad to hear Dr. Markham talk about, you know, what are we going to do for those areas that find it difficult to get teachers to even come? And so I just want to, you know, that was never the solution, even the minus one or the minus two. We're not here to decrease the quality. But let's really look at what's working, what's effective. And I think Dr. Richardson, you kind of answered, asked a lot of the questions I have. And so I'm glad to, that we're taking the time to really engage in this conversation about real issues. You know, because the reality of it is, we can't blame higher ed. We can't blame LEAs. We've got the factors extend beyond that, you know, as Ms. Bell mentioned. You know, we need to really look at, why is it that our young people are not attracted to the field of education? We've got to go even deeper before they ever walk into a higher education institution, you know. So this is a systemic problem that we have really got to keep at the forefront and make a priority. Because it's not going to go away because we passed a resolution. We've got to really look at what is really going to work, what has worked, what's not working. And, you know, and then we're here talking about bringing on another layer of support for people to become educators. We've got to fix the one we have and really be committed to it. And so...
And when you say deeper, we really are going to have to. I know with the Literacy Act, what's causing our students to have to have so many remedial courses when they get to college? I mean, what is it? Are we, and I don't know, I don't have the answer, I'm just throwing that out. But then secondly, in reference to the retention task force, forces or whatever, task force that we're going to have. And let's be intentional and deliberate that whatever their recommendations are, we accept them and we don't change them. Because in the spring, the recommendations that were brought from that group were altered. So now, if we're going to bring people in, I don't think we should bring people in and ask them, what are their recommendations? And then they're changed. I just don't think that's fair of people's time and their expertise and their knowledge.
Well, you're exactly right. And, you know, right.
Because you were on that committee.
They were given that they spent all of that time and then nothing was carried through. And so...
Well, it was, but differently. So let's just be fair.
It was changed, I put it that way. It was changed. And so it's just good to have this conversation. But really, you know, let's be intentional in really going deep into, a little deeper than we have to really identify where these challenges are. It doesn't start in higher ed, it doesn't start. We got to look at what's happening in K-12 so that we won't have a need for remediation, you know. And so you're talking about just accumulation of factors that we may not have discussed in the past.
Well, in the two groups that are working now, the group that Mr. Markham mentioned that he's working with, and then the group that Dr. Rana and I are also working with that we haven't mentioned, that we are working with a separate work group, primarily made of teachers and a few others on the group. But they are looking at our current mentoring program, the Alabama Teacher Mentoring Program. And we are looking at what we need to do to improve that program as well. So the winds of change are occurring. Where we were in panic mode for a couple of years with the pandemic and things that were out of all of our control. And we felt like we were all backpedaling, but I do think we are seeing things begin to level out. And the conversations are shifting now to, let's retain, let's support, and let's recruit. Those are the three big pieces that we're working on.
Basically, the work group that Dr. Pickup referenced, what we're trying to do in that work group is to bring everything together. Because when you are recruiting, you have to think about how are we going to retain the ones that we hire? I mean, some of us have children who wanted to go into education and we said, oh, no. I pay the bills for the family, find something else. Because of some of the issues that we, as teachers, encounter. So when this group, what was going on with the group is made up of educators in the classroom and some principals and, you know, higher ed, some higher ed. But we also factor in the recruitment, because recruitment, mentorship is a recruitment tool as much as it's also a support mechanism for the teachers that we hire. So when recruitment goes out to recruit, they mention, by the way, if you are hired, we will provide mentorship support for you for the first two years. So that's a marketing tool, but it is also a practical tool. So this group, in our meetings, we are looking at what else can we do? We know that we have the Alabama Teacher Mentor Program. We know that it provides this and this, and it's a solid program and we have data to back it up. So what else can we do to shore up the program? And it is a large program. Because as I speak to you now, we have more than 8,400 teachers in it. 4,000 ment, 4,000-plus mentees who are assigned to 4,000-plus mentors. So we're looking at these educators. And one of the accountability measures in the program is that school systems have to report to us, how many of the people we mentored did they retain? Because in the past, sometimes school systems would just let everybody go. And that is not a good practice, that's not promising for somebody coming into the field of education. That's a practical concern. So the school systems need to retain the ones that we have supported instead of just opening the doors and saying, go. Thank you for the first year, and then they have to come back and reapply. If they're not good, by all means, let them go. But I'm saying, just don't do it for the sake of doing it because it's an old practice. So we're looking at retention data in the Alabama Teacher Mentoring Program. We're also looking at recruitment and saying, be sure to let people know that we have a program like this that would help the teachers once they get into our buildings. So we are actually looking to improve what needs to be improved and to keep what needs to be kept in the program. So that's what we're walking through, working on in the work groups, not task force. In the work group that is looking at teacher retention and recruitment.
I think pink slip in all non-tenured teachers happens most often when the legislature has not passed the budget.
Yes. And that is scary if I'm a young person graduating knowing that I can be pink slipped in my first year. That's not a profession. We're trying to just get in. I might look for something that makes sure that I have a job, not to let me go after the first year. Especially if I'm good.
Unfortunately, there are realities that happen where that has to happen. I had the occasion where I had to give a pink slip to my wife because she was my employee and the budget was not passed and we weren't assured of funding. So we let everybody go. We let everybody go procedurally. And we said, we want to hire you back, you're going to be safe perhaps. But that's, but we're in a different political reality with funding. And I think the recent report was, we have, we have a multi-million dollar surplus and we have a better environment. The other reality that we, and I will try to not say anything else, but we will not maintain the right or our exclusivity in education because we're going to see a bill this year about school choice. We're going to see some modification that we should go through the legislature. And there was a recent article about it and it's a major issue. And those individuals may be removed at some level from our program. There are charter schools who say they moved into these high-impact areas and have been recruiting teachers and are serving where they did not before. The Charter School Commission also is competitive in some of the other areas. I can name two counties that I'm specifically familiar with. So we're in a dynamic environment where the school needs, the teacher shortage, and the quality of production are all components that we'll deal with. And the legislature will act in our absence.
I think you hit upon a real important part of this whole picture, why people are leaving the teaching profession. There's a county with five school systems and I think that Dr. McCarty knows what we're talking about. Where I had, when I had that same county in my district at one point, I've had four different districts, it changes all the time. But I had several people who called, they were young. And I knew at least two of them personally. They moved to County County because they married someone from County County. Excellent teachers, just knowing their backgrounds in education, growing up, and they were dedicated. And one actually now is getting Pike Road teaching. But I would get the telephone call at the end of the year, this is Bill. I got one of those pink slips. One actually, the both, the husband and wife are teachers. And so they're looking at trying to provide for a family in the future. And they, at that point in time, they had the flexibility to move if they needed to. But once they established a family, obviously that changes. But that was the trend, not only in this one county, but it seemed to be everywhere. And why would anyone stay in a profession where, as you pointed out, they don't know whether they'll be rehired next year? And we're losing a lot of our best. This one person who now is in the Montgomery County area, she went and she had to add to her income different things to supplement, which took away from her teaching responsibilities, which she dearly loved. And one of the systems continues to be a real challenge, one of the city systems in that county. So it just, I understand why they worked the system and why the superintendents perhaps had to it. And there's no guarantee that the money that we have now in education will be there. So any planning that we, you know, as we move forward, planning needs to be made based on a solid budget and not having extra money all the time. Because I don't think that's in our future for a while. And I've seen it and had to report about it when, back in the late seventies and eighties where we had proration all the time. We have some of the things like the reserve fund to take care of some of those problems. But in the end, we need to plan accordingly so that we don't, it starts with the teacher. And yes, it's part of that task force responsibility. I assume that they're addressing that problem because that is a major problem. There are still systems that got into that routine and they still hold on to it, to the detriment of that system ultimately. And a lot of those are the ones that need the most help.
Are you all represented on the committee that Dr. Markham is heading?
Yes.
Is there representation from this work, your task?
Kelly Stanton.
Yeah, Kelly Stanton is on the screen.
Which is critical to the area that we're talking about. Because it's really good certification, so definitely. And she brings data with her, so, yes.
Two short questions. When your recruiters come to our district, would you let us then? I'd love to go and see them present or them talk. I'd love to be there. And then second question is, seems like there are some high school programs that are about education. There's some courses, it may be out of career tech, I'm not sure. But could, I'd love to know the number of those courses and where they are, like which schools? So, thank you.
We've even had them go out of state. Part of the focus has been our border states as well. So when we say we teach Alabama, we're trying to showcase the fact that you can come to Alabama and teach. So we're going to our border states. It's a real change to the work that they're doing. Actually setting up stations at college fairs to say, this teaching is great. And doing a brochure to show the alternative certification opportunities for those ones who got degrees in other subjects and want to transfer all of them. So we're really changing the focus for that group.
Would we be able to provide follow-up as to how helpful that is? Say at the beginning of the term next year, the 23, 24 school term, that one, or even in January? And we can see for the spring if we have any feedback from that, the numbers, and then in the fall?
What we've asked them to do is to collect data on the individuals that they're communicating with and if they're able to actually get jobs in Alabama. And also, that second layer, what Mrs. West was talking about, the ones that are recruited to come in by them, what is it that you were missing during that time, your first, second, or third year? So really to be that support that leads over into the mentorship.
Okay.
And if they're here.
So we definitely will share those numbers.
The teachers, to let us know how many, where you're getting from that effort.
Yes, ma'am.
And if the recruiter's here, why they don't want to come to us, we need to.
They need to be honest. Yes, be honest.
I mean, they'll be honest, so they need to report back so we know what we maybe can fix.
Is there anything else on this report?
Are you ready to go?
I'm going to sit right here for lunch.
I think we have covered the report and solved the world's problems as well. It's always a pleasure.
You will learn anybody's sins before subject to any kind of questions, whether it's in the appropriate responsibility or not.
Yes, it only bothers me when it's ones I can't answer, that's when I get stressed.
Well, we're all involved in those things.
Exactly. Thank you all for your time.
Without objection, we will reconvene at one o'clock.
Good Christmas watching.
Puddle day.
I'm going to take that car and check.
Miss Frank, get one of your driver's licenses.
I read.
I'm not as affected as the governor, but I also don't get paid as much as she does. With the agenda item now is followed the and Dr. Mackey.
I think the first item is something, I can't bring it up.
So yes, so we're, it's board questions.
Oh yeah, that's right, board questions.
But some of y'all have asked me, I know we've got, we have three groups generally people here. We've got several people from higher ed who are here including some deans who are interested in the conversation later down the agenda about alternative teacher organizations. We have a, we have two things that will come before you for business that we have people here to answer questions about, give a short presentation on. One is the, number item three, the state textbooks, four career tech clusters in architecture, construction, IT, transportation, distribution, and logistics. So, so that presentation, and then we have the exemplary guidelines for exemplary school libraries, which you have just got, you've got something on that today. So, y'all, I'm here the whole time, but I know that some of you asked me, could some of the people who had that were here just for certain things and rearrange the agenda. And if you want to do that, I'm glad to do that, we could start with the textbook committee if you like. We can start with either.
I'll be sure of the textbook committee now.
I'm sorry?
Textbook committee.
That be okay? This gentleman right here from Tuscaloosa there, come on to the table.
Good afternoon, y'all.
Nice to meet you all again. I'm Trip Marshall from Brookwood, Alabama.
I've already counted on this blasphemous tie.
My blasphemous tie here, I'm sorry, my lucky tie.
So we've all just had a little bit of a Christmas luncheon, so your job's important now. And I've seen you interact with kids, so I know you can do it, so you can keep us where you're going.
Okay, well he went ahead and introduced himself, so I guess I'll have to do that part for him. But today we would like to present an overview of the Alabama State textbook adoption process for career technical education in the cluster areas of architecture, construction, information technology, transportation, distribution, and logistics. I am Carolyn Jones, I'm state textbook coordinator, and I have been at this table a couple of times in the last two years. So, but I, I, I do want to acknowledge again, this is Robert Trip Marshall. He is, he was our chairperson for our committee, so he is here today, and I will be assisting him as we go through the overview process for the state textbook process that we've gone through. You should have today's PowerPoint already. Last month you received the confidential documents, the recommendations from the committee. I don't know if you still have that, if there's anybody who still needs a, needs a copy. I did bring extra copies just in case you didn't still have your information from last month. And that was that confidential database that you all received in, I believe it was a folder that looked similar to this. If you don't have that, I do have extras if you need that. And without further ado, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I think we advance ourselves.
Okay.
Okay, our state textbook committee composition is before you. There are 23 members, of those 23 members total, we have 14 that are appointed by our state board. They are four elementary teachers, four secondary teachers, with the change in the state textbook law, those teachers now come from your eight board, state board districts instead of the congressional districts that we used in the past, and then we have four members that are from the state at large, and those members can be your classroom teachers, supervisors, administrators, or superintendents. And we also have two, two people from the higher education segment. The remaining members are governor's appointees, these appointees do, they try to match them with the subject area background that we are reviewing material for. So, that is our, that is our composition. What you see on the screen now are our actual state textbook committee members for career and technical education. As you can see, they are from the eight district, or districts, the state at large, and the post-secondary segment. Unfortunately, we were not able to get two from that, from the post-secondary area, so we were, we did have a vacant spare fours for post-secondary. Reviewing the material is a lot of work, a lot of responsibility, and I can't remember right off now how many companies we had, but even if you have a few companies, sometimes those companies have several different products, so it's not one company and they have one product to review, they may have five or six products that you have to review. So, we have to have additional people beyond what the law outlines for us to have, which is at 23, so these are additional people that you see there listed. We had eight additional people that assisted us with the career and technical education review process. What you see now are the governor's appointees, and I still want to hit a list of their districts that they came from, but we, those are our nine people from the governor's appointee, and as I said before, their office tried to match the subject areas for the appointees. What you see there is steps in the state textbook adoption process. At this time, we just want to briefly touch on those steps of the adoption process, of course, before we can do anything with the state textbook review process, we have to wait for my colleague Kathy Jones, which you're familiar with her as well, she is the course of study coordinator, so once she does that process, that procedure with her committee, then we come behind that group when they are finished with our state standards for whatever clusters that we are visiting. Once that happens, we do reach out to the publishers, we send a request for bids to the publishers, in which that's what we do every single time, and this time with CTE, we reached out to the publishers, sent that information out in a bid packet for them to review and to determine if they want to participate with the review process. Also, at the same time, we are sending out information to receive nominations for the state textbook committee, that information goes out to your state superintendents for them to make nominations of people in their school systems, and when they send that information back, we do pull from that information, and we try to look at race, gender, demographics, and all of that. Sometimes that works out for, sometimes not, because it just depends on the nature of the information that you get back when you're running the textbook committee. And of course, that appointment comes through the state board of education, we submit those names, and they are approved for the process. And of course, their, their job is to review the textbooks and any supplemental materials that are, that are received. We also have a time where we have public input, this is during and after the review process. We sort of put in a initial step here, actually, our state textbook law, there's only one review process that's required, but what we do when we start with the review process, we do put that information out there for any, any public comments or feedback or whatever. We did not receive any feedback at this time for that, not during the initial review process, so we completed that review process without any, any issues or concerns that were sent back to us. And of course, at the end of the process, the committee makes the recommendations to the state board for approval or rejection, which is what you have in that packet that you received last month, is the work of the committee. Okay. And at this point, I'm gonna let, let Trip over here take over.
All right, thank you. Of the, of the four CTE clusters, including architecture, construction, information technology, transportation, distribution, and logistics, excuse me, three of those, there were four companies who actually submitted bids, and we reviewed the textbooks, including Engage Learning, Coffee Scholar, Dynamic Learning, and Good Heart Will Cost Company. So, these were really where we spent the majority of our time reviewing the material.
And I do want to add that we do reach back out to companies for clarification, if we're having concerns or issues with what they have submitted, we, and we had to do that this time, we had to reach back out for some clarification, because we want the process to be fair when we're reviewing the material. So, we do ask for follow-up information or just clarity on the information, sometimes when it comes in from the publishers, it's not always clear if this should be bundled together or if we're looking at it separate, so sometimes we have to reach out to them to, hey, tell us specifically how we should be looking at this, is this something separate, is this a bundle or whatever? Sorry.
And looking at these two types of categories that, that our companies, that we review their materials for, were able to classify their textbooks, it would either be supplemental or comprehensive, and I think that's a little bit about what Dr. Jones was just speaking about, and you can see in the tile on the PowerPoint there what precisely each one of those definitions are referring to with that, with the comprehension and the supplemental. Now, what you're looking at here is a, our rating scale, and, and I'm gonna go into a, to, I guess, rewind a little bit back to 2021. I think Mr. Stevens had introduced this new rubric, a revised rubric, for how we would look at the textbooks and how we would go about giving them the rankings, how they got it. And we'll talk a little bit more about this as we move on into our presentation, but you can see red, yellow, and green, we all, we all know those colors, and, and when we see the textbooks in the tier one, which would be the green, they are recommended for board approval at a 90 to 100% rate. Tier two, the yellow, they're approaching quality, they're not necessarily exemplifying it, there may be some portions of it that do exemplify quality, but still, it's an 80 to 89%, and they are still recommended for board approval. The red, of course, tier three, they are not representing quality, they are 79% or below, and they are not recommended for board approval, they are recommended for board rejection. So, everything we have here today, luckily, that we're talking about, was either classified in the yellow or the green. The, anyway, our committee, when we review these textbooks, we use this tiered approach, and based on these percentages that were earned, determine the textbook and, and where they would be, if they were either a comprehensive or supplemental, where they would be within this, this rubric. Now, some of the guidelines that we went by as we reviewed the textbooks, some of them, some of the things that the look for, the, the big picture that we wanted to see, all evidence, and, and I'm just gonna read right off of the PowerPoint, review and document all evidence before deciding on ratings, consider quality as well as quality of evidence based for each indicator, consider evidence of high quality as well as evidence of low quality, and then do not feel compelled to weight each indicator as a criterion equally, do not consider provided examples to be exhaustive or restrictive, and if evidence is lacking for an indicator, flag it for further data collection. And, and really, these were the, the look for, as we were going in, these were the things, items we were looking for.
Here's what I found on the web.
Somebody's checking you out. Okay.
Sources of evidence. The product itself, unit, lesson plans, teacher guides, student resources associated with software and other components. Credible resources, such as the Louisiana Department of Education or Ed Reports, these were some, some online hyperlinks that we could, we could search for and look and determine. Perceptual data, such as survey responses and focus group findings from educators with experience using the product in schools. Information, such as the product specification, the videos of teachers using the product, provided by developers and publishers. And research findings that demonstrate that the materials have a positive impact on student These are the rankings, we, we kind of discussed this a little bit earlier, one, two, and three, and four, four being the highest, it's exceeding expectations, three, which is good, but, you know, it's, we really didn't want to go anything below a three, and then partially meeting expectation, this is where we really had to get down into the material content and dig deep and make sure that, because there were some textbooks that just basically had a better, they just met the expectation better than others, and, and you see one and certainly insufficient evidence would be the latter of the two. Here is the review form, cover sheet for CTE, you can see the title of the textbook, we would put there, we would put the publisher, one of the four publishers, when it was copyrighted, most everything, I think, had a 2022 copyright on it that we looked at, and then the grade levels, of course, they were going to be secondary in nature. Overall ratings, once again, tier one, tier two, and tier three. This is the second page of the career tech, the rubric, and it really has just another a, a view of it reflecting the three areas that were previously mentioned, they are the guidelines for review, sources of evidence, and definitions of ratings. And you can see those are, those are the top headings there on each one of those. Our components for the textbook review, and the section one was a non-negotiable, and I think that with that non-negotiable, these were...
These are things that I looked at when they came in, they had these non-negotiables, if you're going to submit to the state of Alabama, these are criteria that you had to meet before it even got to the review process, so that was not something that the reviewers had to worry about, but when it came in through me, I was checking off and looking at, did it meet the guidelines that we had set forth to even be reviewed by the committee, because I didn't want them to waste their time reviewing something that was not going to, was not gonna be a fit, and based on, you know, not having things there that were required for us, so that is an area that section one was already basically taken care of for, thank you, you know.
Yes, ma'am. Section two, does it align to the Alabama Course of Study in the standards? Section three, how is it as far as applied in the classroom? I mean, is it, is it very classroom applicable, or are the kids going to be able to use it? And section four, additional criteria of superior quality. Now, sometimes we would have a section four, sometimes we wouldn't, just based on this, and we'll talk about that portion of the review when we get to it, but not all textbooks were reviewed for superior quality. Section one, and again, you can see, that's what I was looking for, does the instructional material align to the Alabama Course of Study, and then architecture, construction, TBL, or IT would be where that is right there? Yes or no? Does the instructional material, is it available for review online in a digital format? Yes or no? And then three, is the username and password to create it an active online access for reviewers and public throughout the entire state and local review processes? So, these were the types of the non-negotiables that we took into consideration. All of this had to be in place, and I think that's what Dr. Jones was talking about right there. Section two, how does it align to the Alabama Course of Study? If we look at each one of these individual classes, how many standards are in these classes? And of these standards that are in these courses that compose these courses, are they all met? How many are met? And then, once you get that number, if there are 50 standards, and you have 47 that are met, where you're going to do the math there, divide, and you're going to get the percentage of the standards met. So, we did have some where there were a textbook that we just did not have a standard, it just was not met there, or it was partially met. So, so these were where we got into the rankings, so. And here is what you would see in the classroom application, and, and really, it's a, the ratings are equivalent to points, four meets the expectation, three meets the expectation again, and so forth. Since four is the highest possible value, and there are a total of 55 items or indicators for classroom applications, you would multiply four times 55, which would give you the maximum total of 220 possible points, and you can see that's right up there at the top of section three. And if the material received, let's say, 215 points of the possible 220 points, then to determine the percentage of the points obtained, you would divide 215 points obtained by 220 points, which would give you 98%, which was a very good score. Section four, additional criteria for superior quality, and you can see at the top of this, as with section three, instead of focusing on the number of standards, section four focuses on the possible points, therefore, you would use the same methods used for the calculation of the percentages of points obtained that were used in section three, no difference. All right, for the, the final evaluation, section one, once again, with the non-negotiables, and I think that Dr. Townsend had addressed this previously, and I, I had some notes on that, but again, you're looking at the three other areas to get your combined total or percentages. Now, again, if you were, the, the non-negotiable, you're not going to divide that into the score, that's a yes or a no, but for section two, three, and four, you're going to divide based on the, if you have, if you have three sections, okay, you're going to divide that total number by three. Now, if you did not have the additional criteria for superior quality, you would only divide by two, because you're not scoring the three. And just some of the textbooks we had, we, you know, we just didn't have that superior quality about it. All right. A little bit about the process, way back last June, we met somewhere down here possibly, and, and took an oath of office, and did a state book, a state textbook law overview, and, and we were really given, Dr. Jones had laid out all of the things that we would be doing over the course of the year through the reviews. The duty, the state textbook committee, the career technical education, a course of study overview, textbook committee organization with a chairperson, a secretary, and a subcommittee assignment. We had a publishers' presentation day on July the 5th, those were done online for the most part, and we were able to, you know, we didn't necessarily have to be here in person for those reviews. As you can see right here on the next page, we, we stayed really busy, met a lot over the course of the summer, multiple days per week, sometimes we decided that it would be best if we, depending on our group that we were working on, we may not meet on the same day as all the other members, but, so we did have some flexibility on how we were able to meet, but again, my group, the five of us got together, and we, we, we did it better in person, so we were able to get a lot more done when we were all together. You can see right down to the, let's see, the official final committee review session, September 13 through 15, and then the 30-day public input period, which we had, I do not believe we had anyone to make any comments on it, however, we will be opening up, releasing another public input day, is that going to be?
Starting tomorrow, they get, by law, there's a 30-day period there, the first 30-day that you see is one that we put in while we're doing the review process, but this, starting tomorrow with the press release, this is the one that is outlined in our state textbook law where they have their 30-day input, and of course, they will get to come before the board next month if they have any concerns and issues, so that's why that's there twice.
On the January 12 report. And here is just a, a sample look of the results we had, if you, you can see the grade level, you can see the textbook, the publisher, average score, supplemental or comprehensive, and then the textbook committee comments. So, for architecture and construction, we had nine through 12, and then you see we had Construction Academy Basic Principles, which was Jones Learning, it had an average score of 93%, now that's going to be of the group, that's not going to be individual score, but we composed all of the group members to get that number. Now, unfortunately, if you go down to the one below it, and you see Welding Basics, and from Stevens Publishing, 76% is a C, but it is not, was not recommended to the board, so it would be recommended for board rejection. It needed to be within that 80% or above for us to, to find it to be a great textbook. It needed to be within that 80% or above for us to find it to be a great textbook.
I like the names.
Yes, ma'am. All right. And that is the last slide we have, but we certainly are open for any questions or comments about this.
Well done.
Very well done.
Thank you all.
Very clear cut. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
She did it all.
Oh, no. She knows she has to go.
Any questions on the board? Here we now, we will move the agenda. Resolution for adoption of guidelines for exemplary Alabama school libraries. Is there a presentation, Dr. Mackey?
There is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a happy holiday.
You too.
There he is. I lost Sean Stevens, which would be a true tragedy for Mr. Parkman.
And his book got rejected.
What was that?
He was saving publishing.
Well, it made no money off that book, so I had to stay working for us.
And you come up to...
Yes, it was a tragedy.
Y'all need some more chairs.
I need some more. And just for information for the board, to let you know that we take in your direction with the textbook adoption process, we are able to demo our kind of online portal adoption, both submission from the publishers to the committee's ability to review them online yesterday. Lots of things coming in that we're trying to put in place that we make this whole process more seamless and much more transparent to the public, has as much access to what it is that we're using in our classrooms. And so, but this is our opportunity to really showcase these wonderful educators who have been brought by Dr. Mackey in the task force on exemplary school libraries. It would not have been possible without Susan Xana, who is now our retired library media specialist. She's enjoying retirement, but it was because of her leadership and the work of our, of this task force that we're so excited about what they're going to share with you, how we can ensure that our libraries are pillars of academic excellence and help students truly achieve at their high schools.
All right, fantastic. If you'll hand me the clicker, I think I just got one slide. It's wonderful to be with you today. We're happy to share this document with you. And before we really share a lot of the document with you, we wanted to share with you kind of our, whoa, how are we get? Okay. Our process with the task force. Kathy Jones, who, as you know, supervises course of study, gave us a lot of advice. We sought nominations and assembled a team that represented all of your districts. We looked for people with varying backgrounds, some elementary, some secondary. We have administrators, we have higher education. And so we had about 21 committee members, committee members we assembled in March. We looked at a number of things. We are replacing a document that was published in 2008. So as you can imagine, school libraries have changed just a little bit since 2008, just a little. And so that was our, our goal, is to replace that document. We did an expert review, we did a public review, we sought input from school librarians and other professionals at multiple turns. And we are very proud to present you today, the Guidelines for Exemplary Alabama School Libraries. So I'd like to introduce our presenters, but before I do that, I'd like to introduce some other members of our committee. Stand up, stand up. There's Ms. Whitney Cunningham from Montgomery, Kat Baxter from Tuscaloosa City, Annalisa Kyler from Mountain Brook Schools in Sandy Peak, formerly of Baldwin County Schools, now with Coastal Alabama Community College. So they've been part of this committee, although not presenting today, they're here to lend moral support and be recognized for their work as well. And presenting for us today, we have Ms. Deidra Brewer, NBCT EDS from Muscle Shoals City Schools. We have Dr. Farisha Harper-Darrington from Fairfield City Schools. I'm sorry, Deidra's an elementary school librarian, Farisha is a high school librarian, Dr. Andrew Maxi, NBCT Director of Strategic Initiatives, Tuscaloosa City Schools, and Dr. Wendy Stevens, Associate Professor and School Library Program Chair at Jacksonville State University. So I'm going to turn it over to these fine folks who will share with you the highlights of what we consider Guidelines for Exemplary School Libraries.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to present this to you. We just want to go quickly through our work, but we want to start with articulating the reason for this document. The purpose of this document is to promote the role of school librarian as an instructional partner. It is very important to us in this work to put a cross to the board, but then more importantly to schools and districts, that the stereotypical role of a librarian as the custodian of books is not what is the key role in schools, but that the librarian is a trained professional that is, that is a high-impact partner in instruction for everyone in the school. It's also very important for us to make the point that a librarian is a champion of literacy. I would argue that teaching, that producing strong readers is the fundamental purpose of schooling. And what we know very clearly from research, that teaching a student to read is not enough. You must teach a student, a student must engage in reading. And the role of the library in promoting engagement in reading is part of the key goal of what we're doing, to produce adults that not only can read, but choose to do so. And then, of course, this document goes fairly systematically through describing what an exemplary school library looks like, and provides a great deal of detail that schools and districts can use to reflect on the state of their library and targets to aim at as they do their work. We do want to share, I'm not going to read the whole slide for you, but schools and districts across the state are part of professional learning communities, including national organizations such as the American Association of School Libraries. And we stand by the beliefs as articulated by AASL that, among those, that a school library is an essential part of the learning community. As someone with a background teaching in other states, I want to put out publicly that it is significant that Alabama has always funded a school librarian, and that we are in fact looking at funding metrics moving forward to ensure that every school has a full-time librarian in their school. And in an age where there are many states that have gone away from that, it is extremely commendable that we have not done so. And I also want to commend the board and our legislature for restoring funding to libraries several years ago that had been missing. So in Alabama, we do stand by these beliefs, and we are making this a priority, and it's been our honor to be part of the work to articulate what exemplary libraries look like.
And I'm going to share a little bit about the structure of the document. And the document that you all have in the binder, it uses four sections to set out our aspirations for exemplary school library spaces, contemporary collection management, and a vibrant learner-centered collaborative approach to creating a culture of literacy in the support of the reading engagement that Dr. Maxi spoke about through the dynamic integration of a range of information, literacy, and technology applications across the curriculum and grade levels. The last three of the four sections are supported by performance rubrics, especially critical for library and self-evaluation. Try to scroll down a little bit. Oh, too much. Okay. And these have indicators for developing, accomplishing, and exemplary levels for school library programs. I'm also going to speak a little bit about collaboration. Strong library programs are typified by curricular support, including collaborative planning and instruction between various members of the school learning community. And school librarians have extensive graduate coursework and a range of instructional strategies around information, literacy, inquiry, and research skills. And across Alabama, at schools with more than 250 students, librarian units are funded under the foundation program. And they connect teachers and readers with a range of instructional materials to support diverse student needs. A body of research reinforces the connection between strong library programs and achievement in all subject areas. And today, school librarians must serve as, first as an educator, first and foremost, concerned with curricular attainment, but also in developing lifelong habits of inquiry and curiosity, as leaders promoting and advocating for student literacy and access to a range of information, resources, as an information specialist, introducing the school community to emerging instructional technologies and sources, and as an instructional partner in teaching research skills across content areas and grade levels. And now, Deidra Brewer's going to share more about learner outcomes.
Okay, learner outcomes. An exemplary school library program empowers students to large develop and apply skills in four different areas. It's library use, information, literacy, literature appreciation, and digital citizenship. When the library task force met together, we took a cross-curricular approach to drafting the recommended learner outcomes by connecting our work to the 2021 Alabama Course of Study for English Language Arts. We used the 2018 Alabama Course of Study for Digital Literacy and Computer Science, and the American Association of School Librarians Shared Foundations. And these recommended learner outcomes are not new concepts for libraries or additional things for librarians to do, but they provide guidance to what Alabama school librarians should be teaching at each grade level band or each grade level. If you look at the legend, this will make more sense when we look at it, when it's applied on the next slide. But we have them color-coded for what's optional, where you're going to introduce a concept, develop the concept, and apply the concept. And we also included in our recommended learner outcomes, the American Association of School Librarians Shared Foundations, and we wanted those to reinforce what we are doing as librarians. So you will see the letters IQ for inquire, IN for include, CU for curate, CO for collaborate, EX for explore, and EN for engage. So these learner outcomes map out tasks in a unified way. And you will see right here, this is an example of what it looks like, what we have suggested as recommended learner outcomes, and how it's divided by grade band, where it's introduced, and the task, that way.
All right, I'm going to talk to you about a culture of literacy. Of course, exemplary school library programs nurture a culture of literacy, and they're the heart of the school's reading community. So exemplary school libraries encourage, foster, and support a passion for reading and lifelong learning in everyone. So our reading communities are fostered through the cultivation of environments that are conducive to literacy and the curation of resources that are provided in a multiple genres, multitude of genres and formats. So this ensures that all learners are equipped with equal and open access to the library and its environment. And in addition, exemplary school libraries further expand literacy development through the implementation of initiatives and programs and events that promote reading for information and recreational reading. It also enriches learning, and it cultivates an appreciation for literature. Access. So in our exemplary library programs, we create and maintain equal and open access environments for all members of the school community. That's everyone, teachers, students, and community stakeholders. And we promote frequent visits to the library. Services are provided through a myriad of scheduling options where they are determined by the learner's academic and developmental needs. So optimal scheduling offers all learners access at the point of need, which means that the library can accommodate various groups, like small groups, individuals, and even when a class is present. Intellectual freedom. Exemplary school libraries are committed to every learner's freedom to read and look at them as an essential right of all citizens in a democracy. So exemplary school library programs provide ongoing support for equitable access to library services, information resources, literature, and books. This is maintained through balanced, high-quality, and age-appropriate resources that meet curricular needs and personal interests. Along with the guidance and governance of local education agencies, exemplary school library programs provide learners with the greatest possible access to information while also protecting learners' privacy and confidentiality for material and technology selection.
There's the next part of this document that we would like to discuss is the role of the school librarian in managing and administering a library program. And there are several sections here that we would like to call your attention to. The first is, the standard for an exemplary library is that it's led by a full-time certified library media specialist. Again, as we mentioned already, this is funded at the state level. This is, it is also important to have support at the district level. As a brief tangent, there are recommendations at the national level for additional staffing in libraries, and we need to begin thinking about school librarians as very powerful peers in the process of collaborative teaching within a school. When we have them mostly doing administrative tasks, we are cheating ourselves of the work that they can be doing to advance learning in the school. The next issue that is important in the administrative side is access. As we've also already brought up, it is important that every student have access and that the library itself be an inviting place to, of the horses that I, that may not be doing well, but I continue to beat. One of them is that reading engagement is absolutely essential to building strong readers. This is not secondary to reading instruction, it is the other side of the literacy coin. We must take advantage of high-quality collections and insist that our students have access to them and take advantage of that access. Also, under the purview of a librarian, is administering a budget, both that provided by the state, and then those where possible, that is raised locally or even through the efforts of the librarian themselves. And then a task that is perhaps not strange to others, but is almost always underestimated, is the work of collection development, that an individual library should reflect the learners in the school. And one of the ways of thinking about this that is within the librarianship world is to think of ensuring that your students have windows and mirrors. You need, your children need to see themselves in the books that are in the library, and they need to see others in the books that are in the library. We can say from this perspective that access to those high-quality books has increased significantly since the last time we updated this document. And so the processes for making those decisions is very important to a librarian, and particularly making decisions when you combine this with a budget for how to leverage the funds you have to make the very best decisions about your collection within the library. And then, of course, we want to make clear that a school library has a variety of types of resources available in it, and that these, that there are, there are a lot of weeds to dig down into to understand what makes an effective library program within a school. And then there are a couple of more roles that are important to librarianship. One is advocacy and outreach within the school and outside the boundaries of their school, advocacy for these functions that we've been talking about this morning, this afternoon. And then also, it is extremely important for individual districts, local LEAs in particular, to have very clear policies that govern the role of their library in a number of areas, and those are articulated in this guiding document. It's for the school districts to make those determinations, but the necessity of doing that is clearly articulated in this document.
Can I comment at this point?
Yes, sir.
The Alabama Association of School Board meeting last Friday, one of the presentations was what do you do when materials are challenged?
Yes, sir.
And the attorney that presented, there was minimal case law available, only one case that was never affirmatively decided by the Supreme Court. So it's obviously something, as we get to this, that's significant in our current environment. And the discussion of, do we have a sample policy, or does the state school board have a policy? Because the policy, the last one we had referenced was that the state school board, the state were supposed to have a list of all the library books, which is obviously an outdated requirement. So in dealing with challenges, is there a proposal or are there sample guidance that you have to present to us?
The document clearly indicates... The document clearly indicates that part of exemplary work includes having those policies in place. It's my recollection that we do not have a sample policy in the document itself. That might be something that we could add. We do have other, the evaluation systems, we have examples of that. It was the position of the committee that those policies are absolutely essential to be developed at the LEA level.
Should the state's school board have a policy?
I shall now speak only for myself, and say that...
You're the only person I'm talking to.
Yes, sir. My position is that the school board should have a policy directing districts to develop their own policies.
Because the case law is minimal.
Correct.
There isn't any, the last affirmative decision, the four-to-four decision, the person that wrote that policy has long since been off the US Supreme Court. So that was a very lively discussion at the School Board Association, which I happened to attend. And I was only school board member, so everybody wanted me to know what we were doing. And I said, I don't know.
I can speak for my peers in this round that we believe very much in equitable access to libraries that are as we have described, and that policies that are developed and followed carefully are absolutely essential to maintaining those healthy collections and healthy libraries. We believe that those are decisions that need to be made at the local level, and that those are policies that need to be in place. And in our districts, those policies are in place, but we can't say definitely that those exist everywhere.
So those policies prescribe how to handle a challenge, and how that resolution accounts, and how it's communicated to the parents?
Yes, sir.
The parents, I assume, can challenge individuals?
Absolutely. And it would only take me maybe 15 minutes to get you our policy. So yes, those exist. And we strongly, it is strongly recommended in this, and it's more of a description, that in order to have an exemplary program, you must have such a policy.
I'd have to say from experience over the years, when a parent, and recently I've had a number of parents contact me, and either through email or phone, questioning a book that their child checked out or brought home. And my next question is, what was it, from the classroom itself, or the library? And then they have to go back and check. But the convenience, it is a convenience, because we don't, and we can't, although we have this, Dr. McCarty had pointed out, there is a requirement in law to have a list. And then somebody did actually cite that. I don't know if they watched our work session. They said, are you supposed to have a list? And I said, well, you don't. You know, even what the law says doesn't necessarily think that it's going to be there. But from the standpoint of being able to refer them back to the locals, that has been convenient. That's not really the word I'm looking for, but it has been, I think, the appropriate way to handle it, because we cannot monitor all those books. And you may have a teacher that, perhaps the principal doesn't even know, has a collection of books that probably would not pass muster, wouldn't necessarily fit what you're defining in the report here. But anyway, that's actually, there's a benefit in restricting it to the local school stores, and that setting those restrictions, and making setting your own policies, and monitoring what happens between libraries. But I don't think that issue is going to go away. I think it's actually going to increase, and obviously you agree from your reaction. Do you see more questions being asked by parents and groups as a whole? And things that don't even, they're not there. Because in asking those questions, I'll say, well, what book is it? Well, I just heard, and that seems to be pretty common, too. But if it's happening, obviously, we want a way to address it. And going back to what was said or written before, that's age-appropriate, as well as, is it a mini-daggy? Is it just a trashy book that happened to end up in the library? Or is it something that has some significant positive content? But anyway, so I understand that dilemma, and actually, it makes sense from the standpoint of monitoring. And now that so much of it, when I was re-shelving books in the Auburn University Library when I was a student there, I was there until 1:00 in the morning, past closing. But it's a lot different now, as you know. A child would be a lot easier these days. I wouldn't have to shell this many books. But it's, it is a different world, and for that reason, I assume that there will also be monitoring of the things that are online, and the books that students could have access to. And that seems to be addressed in this particular presentation.
Does your policy also include restricting certain sites to access on the wifi, or in the... I mean, because some people assume that any restriction is inappropriate, some more sites restricted, whether it's TikTok or other things. You know, there are other agencies that are engaged in this, and perhaps the legislature will engage it if we don't.
So to that specific question, from a technical standpoint, that exists, but falls under the purview of the laws and policies around instructional technology, and technology. So that definitely does exist, and districts definitely do. We were having a conversation recently about some teachers frustrated with the way in which we block sites to ensure students are okay. And maybe it would be a resource for teachers, but we are erring on the side of safety.
But the library is one of the primary nodes where you gain access.
Absolutely.
So if the library is not consulted or instrumental in setting those restrictions, or eliminating those restrictions, that's part of what you said, that's a policy.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Those practices should be done in...
It's just not the IT person. It has to be the person. Because I assume that anything in the library, as you stated earlier, has to have a curriculum association, which is approved by the state board. So there should be a nexus between the curriculum and the curriculum appropriateness for certain age levels relate to the content of the library. It is a significant issue. It's not tangential now in today's society.
If I may add also, Dr. Brenner, the previous document that is being updated within the policies and procedures area, there was a procedural checklist. And there are things that will guide the librarians of the locals of what to include. And one of those is acceptable internet usage. And that document that is required is a part of the handbook. And within that, it's probably about, I may be a few off, about 25 or 30 items that they will have in there to make certain that they are addressed in the procedures and policies book. So the librarians at the locals are not just out there to come and develop. There are some things that must be included. And then that bottom line, say, any other items that are applicable to your district, so that they can make certain community issues are actually addressed within the guidance of that document. So there are some non-negotiables, and it's still with curriculum appropriateness. It's just tons of things that are there that they're led in the development of their guidance.
A lot of people attribute some of this knowledge that parents are more aware of it because of COVID, and they're actually participating online. And they didn't know before, so they didn't know what to object to. And that's where we are now.
Right. And one of those two, Dr. Brenner, is challenged materials. That's one of the boxes that they are to have some policies and procedures in place on how a parent or community stakeholder would actually challenge that material. So they're not left out there hanging, and that's a piece. The purpose of this is just to make certain that we understand, from whatever year that other document was developed up to now, COVID and many other things have taken place. And we want to make sure that evidence-based best practices are in place for our libraries to move forward in this new era of technology especially.
And I think as Bill Clare referenced, another issue is that there are library sources in the media center, and there are libraries that teachers bring and set up themselves. And I don't know what role the media specialist, or the control, or the action has, or the action has to be taken directly against a teacher who brings personal biases or personal preferences into a document that they make available to children, which may or may not be subject to review. So who should review those? Should the librarian?
So the...
The structure?
Those challenged material processes do include both a material finding in the library or in a classroom. But on the front end, the selection process of a teacher to have books available for their students to read, which is also very important, is not subject to review, direct review by the librarian. However, all of these processes, there's very systematic ways of going across the criteria for how to select materials. And so that is a practice that teachers are engaging in. Again, a teacher as a partner with, sorry, librarian as a partner with teachers, it can be a key resource for those processes in the classroom as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of things. First of all, I think this document is going to be very helpful. Because oftentimes, when you're the librarian, the principal wants you to help them with administration. But you've identified that you're supposed to be an instructional partner, a literacy champion, and to define an exemplary school. But then, when you outline the content, as Dr. Brenner was saying, with the standards, you have the outcome, for then we can see the grade bands. And then from there, we're able to see if they're optional, if they're introduced, developed, or applied, which also ties into rules that's on it. So you all did a great job with that. Thank you. Oh, and also, part of privilege. All of the panelists did very well. I applaud all of you. But I'm very proud of Dr. Fredesha Derrington from Fairfield. She is our media specialist librarian, and I also was her principal when she was in Alabama.
She was at Alabama School, you were the principal?
Right. She was a student, and since we're going there, I started teaching at 19 for the...
She's very...
So I was a principal at 26.
Yes.
For the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all were great.
Without objection, is there anybody who wants to discuss anything about the GIFT in Education Month? Hearing none, we will then go to item... Six. I'm sorry, I can't count that item. Which is the intent to adopt the administrative code?
So, may I, Dr. Brenner?
You are in charge.
So I'm going to pass down another... Did Miss Bell please? She told me she had to leave right too. Here's another updated version, and I have extras that I'm going to pass around so that some of our Dean friends in the office will see too.
Is this the same old assembly?
It is not.
No, I don't see it.
This is new. This is updated. I have one here from Miss Manning. Thank you, though. So let me just tell you, the only thing changed... On this version, if you will flip over to page three, so flip one, you're going to see there are three. There are four colors of ink on this. And so what you have is version, the original, version two, the version three, and now a version four. The change here is the purple that you see at the top of page three, and that is, as was discussed last month, would, if you put the purple in, that would require any of these alternative teacher organizations to meet the same faculty requirements as the colleges of education have to meet. That's the difference, because that's what we talked about last month. The other things, I think, we kind of settled on, we agreed to. Now, I will, I'll tell you this part, and then we'll let it go. I'm in for y'all's discussion. As best we can tell, if we put this in, there are no alternative teacher organizations in America that can meet these guidelines, so we just won't have any. If we leave this out, there's only one that meets all the guidelines, and that's called ITEACH. And otherwise, we don't know that there are any others. Now, that's to our knowledge. I'm not going to say, because there may be one that's operating in Van Gormeien that we don't know about, and they'll just show up and say, oh, we meet all these qualifications. But one of the reasons, because we'd already put in they had to be capricorn. And to our knowledge, only ITEACH is capricorn. And then the other one, and we don't know that any of them meet these faculty criteria. I'm not saying they won't eventually do it, though, because some of them may say, well, we're going to go higher that people that meet these faculty criteria. I just want you to know that information going into it. We are glad, we've internally discussed, as you know, Ms. Harris is out sick, and she actually called me last night to talk about this. So we went through it, and I'm sorry now, I feel even worse, because she must have been feeling pretty poorly. But we talked about it. We're fine with either option that the board wants to go with. We, if we vote on something in January, then you know you would be lay on the table for 45 days, and so it would be March before you could put something actually in the code. So there was discussion also about, do we want to have something in the code before the legislature reconvenes? And we'd be pretty close, because we could, you could vote as early as the March board meeting, which is like the 10th, and the legislature convenes, but they don't vote yet. So it'd be really close. So you would have something in place before they get going, if you want to. There's not a, well, I mean, there kind of is, because they did pass a law that says the board will adopt rules. So as I said last time, and I don't mean to belabor the point, but it worries me if we got no rules when they've passed a law that says the legislature will adopt rules. What you want those rules to say is your prerogative. You're the constitutional body to set that. And we do have several higher ed folks that have stayed, I know just for this conversation. I know Dean Fairbrother was here from Auburn earlier and had to get back, because he had another meeting on campus this afternoon. But so with that, Dr. Brenner, I opened up for discussion, for questions. But we did put that, the purple in. And I guess my request is, at the end of the day, to know what you want in black to vote on next month. We just need to know which pieces you want to keep that we would put before.
With Dr. Mackey, I'll comment, and then I'll recognize any audience secretly. The thing that was very clear to all of us is that this intent was adopted unanimously by both houses of the legislature. And it seems to me the intent was that some other agencies be permitted to function in Alabama. And they left it up to the board to promulgate those rules. And if you promulgate a rule which eliminates, which has nobody available, which you said this purple would eliminate everybody, that would seem to be contradictory to the intent of the legislature. And I don't want to do anything in my position that I know is contradictory to what the legislature does, and which may in fact promote the legislature to act again because they feel we didn't act reasonably. And that concludes my remark. Anybody else have something to say?
I did have a question about that, just related to what you said regarding page three. Are there any legal ramifications for us? I know in other industries, when you write specifications so tight that only one vendor can apply, you get yourself in, you open yourself up to legal matters. In this case, if you write specifications or rules restricting anyone... I didn't have this question 10 minutes ago. I have it now.
Yeah, I understand that.
And I guess I'm looking to counsel. What does that mean for the board? What, what does that mean for the board?
I mean, obviously, if you intentionally do it to exclude people, that's, that can be an issue. But obviously, it's under the word percy to write, write the rules. And I hate to say what you'd expect, it just, it depends, it depends on the intention of how you're writing the rules, do I write the rules the way you think they should be written? And the result is, you know, an unintended consequence, then maybe only to meet that criteria, then, you know, obviously, that's okay, there's nothing illegal about that. If you, you know, conspire with a group to write them, where they only fit this group, then obviously, that can put us into some legal problems.
Or if in fact you know writing the rule eliminates everybody, whether it's conspiratory or functional, if we're told that this eliminates everybody, is that not, how would we interpret that as part of our mandate from the legislature?
I mean, that kind of becomes a political problem.
I mean, it was, I was told by the legislature intended that this, if we adopt this purple section, nobody will qualify, no one. So I have to take it as word.
If I could just give, like, I wanted to read to your point, one part of the law.
Yes, ma'am.
You've had parts, you've had the copy in front of you, and the intent of the legislature is not always like a white and white concrete thing, if someone were to bring an action and say, you didn't treat me fairly, for anything. But this is stated, and it says, "It is the intent of the legislature that policies, rules, and regulations intacting alternative teaching certificate and teacher preparation programs shall create an equal opportunity for design, approval, delivery, implementation, and continued review for accredited teacher education programs at traditional institutions of higher education as are created for alternative teacher preparation programs." And I think that there's a recognition that the alternative is not the same as your traditional teacher prep programs. And the intent is for the board to continue to move and give every opportunity to traditional that might be afforded to another. Does that, does that, I mean, that's, that's kind of mine when I'm reading that.
Or equal opportunity, that's reverse.
That's what I was about to say, equal opportunity.
Equal opportunity for the non-traditional.
No, it's actually saying that it's the intent of the legislature for alternative pathways to be here, and that traditional colleges should be afforded every opportunity for the same design programs innovation that is being afforded to the others. In other words, don't hold them back on innovation if these others are approved.
So they could do, and I think we talked a little bit about that last month. So a college, I don't want to say a college of ed, and I certainly don't want to speak for the folks in the room, we all respect them, but a university, let's say, could come in and say, not offer a degree, remember, these, these programs cannot offer degrees, they offer coursework that leads toward a recommendation for certification. But a university could come in and say, through their continuing, continuing education office, and say, we'll offer this, you know, an alternative pathway in addition to our regular college of ed program, which is obviously, you know, that, you're getting a degree through that as well. These are not degree-bearing courses. So we, so, so once this is done, if we have universities who come back and say, we also want to offer a non-degree sort of pathway that's out of the box, and we want you to give it equal consideration as you would a private vendor, then we would do that. They would also be able then, in my opinion of the law, which I'm not a lawyer, they would, could say, and by the way, in this new alternate, out-of-the-box approach, we're not going to meet the faculty guidelines that you require us to meet to offer degrees. This is separate from that, in that we, we would have to offer universities an opportunity to do that, you know, that as well. Is that...
I, I think that is exactly it. So you have, you have an entity that offers a degree, and that entity that gives someone a degree has a lot of rules around it, and that's where CAES involved and all that. If that entity that offers a degree also wanted to say, we have another thing where, we may have people who walk in our doors, they're not here to get another degree. They already have a degree, or maybe they have multiple degrees. And they're here, and they say, I'm thinking about teaching, I want to give it a shot. I've actually got a job, and I'm thinking, can you train me to do this? Then they could do this and not offer a degree if they want it. And all the same rules for that would be the same as these other programs, because these programs aren't offering degrees.
And the universities have that right now.
It is telling us that we should make certain the universities are afforded...
We don't need to give them an advantage, I'm arguing.
Right, 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 yeah. The law's telling us that any of our rules should not exclude colleges and traditional programs for doing the same thing if they're not offering degrees.
But to short answer your question, it's no, they can not do that now, because there is no, in other words, they, they can follow one of our, our certification programs that's outlined, and they do, whether they're degree, traditional B, B certification degree programs, A certification degree programs, or an alternative pathway program. But the law says we should also offer universities the option to create an alternative approach outside of our traditional certification approaches. I don't think, another thing, I just, I will say, we, I'm going to say for me, that there's no question that I personally feel strongly that there is great value in going to college to get a teaching degree. That's what I did. And that's why I would love to see all of our teachers to, to go to college. I've said that over and over, I've said publicly, it'd be great if we had enough people at eighteen years old who said, I want to be a teacher. And they go through college, and they get the coursework, they get the practical experience, they get the classroom experience, they pass all the tests, and they teach. Our problem is, we live in a world where it's not just a teacher shortage, which I'll talk some about this morning, but where people are not doing that in other degree areas too. Now, there are some, Dr. Reynolds mentioned, certainly medicine is still very traditional, and there are definite stop gates, stop gates in there. The practice of law is one, but we look into other things like the computer science world at all, and it's not, like, you can go get a degree in computer science, or you might get a two-year degree and then go to a coding institute and get a certification and be qualified to take the same job as somebody that has a master's in computer science, because they're just, and I think that's some of the pressure that's being put on the education community, and I don't mean on the board or on the colleges, but just on the education community, is that there are all these, these, I don't, career paths around us that now have multiple entryways. And there's some, we're getting some of that societal pressure to creating multiple entryways to teach. Not to degrees, they still have to have a college degree, but I think that's what's hard. Yes, ma'am, sorry.
It's like looking at the law again, and where the applicant shall, and you're right, must hold a bachelor's degree first, but then also, one of the conditions is be recommended for certification by the employing Alabama local school superintendent. So have our superintendents weighed in on this? What are their thoughts?
We have, on this particular, what's right in front of us.
Right, on this law.
It's been out there, they've seen it, I have one superintendent to give any yes or no. But now, as far as alternative teacher prep, you know, yes, I've heard from dozens of superintendents who want more alternative pathways.
Okay.
Some feel like the legislature's not gone far enough, they feel like we've not gone far enough, some, I will be honest, I won't call any names, some of them, I think, are way too far out there. One or two, two have come to me and said they want us to figure out a way that junior colleges can recommend people for teacher certification, they don't have to hold a four-year degree anymore, which I said I wouldn't do. But, but yeah, so superintendents are pushing for more pathways. I won't say all superintendents, but many of them are. Some of them, you know, yes, been in the news, have entered their own contracts with online universities to create degree programs so that they can get into our current alternate pathways. And there is just another thing, y'all read, and some of you've asked me about the, this apprenticeship stuff that's going on, Tennessee does. We are working on that. We have a person, one of our new recruiters is actually digging deep into that, Siobhan Harris, we've met, Mr. Moore's met with us, and Josh Laney. We've had one long, pretty in-depth meeting that I was in, and then I know they've had several follow-up meetings. So I would say in the spring, you're going to get another code change proposal about how we, an intern, an apprenticeship, how that would work. But the short of it is, in those apprenticeship programs, they take someone who does not have a college degree, generally, I'm not saying it's the only way, but generally, they don't have a college degree, but they're working, say, as a teacher's assistant, maybe in special education, and they want to become a special ed teacher. And they can be paid by the district, be working in the classroom to get practical experience, and maybe going to night classes or going, you know, weekend classes to complete both their degree and their certification pathway at the same time. We would anticipate, at this point, again, I don't have the code, but they're working on it, that that would only be, that pathway would only be in conjunction with our traditional colleges of education, because there is a great deal of oversight, but they can't just, they can't just be assigned to a classroom. They have, if I'm going to be in the apprenticeship pathway for special ed teacher, I have to be working in a special ed teacher's classroom, I can't be in a, you know, a science classroom or something like that. So they're not just anywhere, they have to be. And I think that's a, probably going to be a new legitimate pathway. It's, there's some expense, because that person is being paid to work while they're in school, so they're, so they're, but they're also functioning. They cannot, in the apprenticeships we've seen, and again, I don't have the rules for you yet, but in what I think we would recommend, to the point that y'all discussed earlier this morning, they couldn't be put in their own classroom, because the apprenticeship model requires that they be with a journeyman. So they would be with a, they would have to be, you'd have basically a practicing teacher and a teacher working together.
So they'd have to do things we don't require now with the programs we've seen.
With it, right, the apprenticeship would be a whole new approach, but I think that's coming also.
It would be contradictory to what's now going on, where people are hired as full-time subs.
It would be better, in my opinion.
But it's, you're right, but it would, I will make another comment, because I live in an environment where there are a lot of professional people who have the opportunity to serve a career out, like I did, and then seek credentialing another way. And when I decided to become a nurse, I was a little older, a lot older, and I went and got an associate degree. And they said, why are you here, you have an earned doctor? Well, I just want to be a nurse. And the exponential program at the community college prepared me to be a nurse quickly and practically. And that's a function. In this item two, it says, "The state superintendent shall maintain the database of board-approved alternate teaching preparation organizations." Does that, that does not preclude any college from designing a program like that and submitting it to you, does it?
It does not.
So, the question about the university being able to do the same thing under this rule already exists, if they choose to. If, if the University of Alabama Huntsville or Athens State wants to take somebody with a degree in chemical engineering, and as I said before, I'm a secondary person, and make them, and let them become chemistry teachers and design a program, they could in fact do that under this rule, under the current law, right? Am I correct or not? I know you're not a lawyer, and I'm not either, but we're doing...
Well...
Education administrators. I've got a degree in education, I went through all that stuff, but all my, but all my coursework, incidentally, was in the School of Business at the University of Georgia, was not in the School of Education. And when I got credentialed in Alabama, the dear lady who was here for fifty years handled my case, and I had to prove my management courses equated to my EDU courses. Unfortunately, I got credentialed.
So, the only thing, Dr. Reynolds, where I think I don't completely agree with that is that if they design their own program now, the law clearly says they, you know, they knew what other organizations would do.
Right.
But we haven't adopted any rules, so there is beyond, you know, one, three, four. There are all these requirements about the continuing program evaluation, progress report, some report. So what I would say is, there's, there's law on the books that allows the board to establish rules to do that, but there are no established rules, so I don't know how they could go out and just say, we're going to do something, because the enabling legislation is there, but the follow-up piece that says, here's how the enabling legislation will work, we've not done yet. So I, I don't...
We've not done the legislature about that.
The legislature's done the enabling legislation, but we don't have a rule then, we don't have any guidelines around what that would look like. And so if one of these ladies or gentlemen came, in fact, they just created a program with no guidance, and then recommended somebody to me and said, you know, give this person a teaching certificate, we designed something, we would likely turn that down, because like, I mean, unless, we would, we would say, well, that's got to fit into one of our guidelines. And that's what we're doing here, is creating something that could be a new, a new structure. But I think it would be hard for them to do it without the, without some sort of rule. I might be, the more I talk, the more I...
And so, I think that, yeah, we already have, the board has in its rules now, something called innovative pathways, like that was already in the board's rules, it's been there for a very long time. And some colleges have taken advantage of innovative pathways.
Right.
So examples of that might be the UAB Teach and things like that. So that is an innovative pathway that is outside of a traditional educator prep program. Maybe it works in partnership, or it's outside. So our, the board already has, says, these are innovative pathway options. This particular legislation said that the board has to apply innovative pathway option to someone who is not an institution at higher learn.
And so...
They would have to let the companies have an opportunity to prove that their program is approved by us, because that's what, you're going to do a list, I mean, it's going to be a list.
And you're right, that, that, the legislature delegated that authority to the board to adopt those rules as part of that, of that law.
For the outside. But the rule already exists for the innovative practice for existing institutions.
Yes, yes.
That's right. They have to write a plan up and submit it to us for approval, but there is...
So there's a question I initially asked, there's already a mechanism for colleges to develop an innovative program without requiring a degree in education.
That is, yes.
The same as these outside institutions, so if you don't adopt the purple, and we adopted, as I got ahead of time, there's still not a restriction that the colleges, universities can, or colleges can do the same thing.
That would be correct. They would just apply to us and say, we have an alternative pathway, we would like you to approve.
They just have to initiate their own creativity, which is what I would support.
My apologies, because I didn't quite understand it. But you got, now that you have, got the question, I've got it.
So I'm circling back to you now on the purple.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm saying, is it your recommendation that we not include this purple section because we have covered all that we need to cover in terms of the rules and what we already have on the books? Is that what I'm hearing, or, or are you saying I do recommend?
No, I think I, that's a, I mean, I favored it without the purple, to be honest with you, because I think it, it's more, I, I do have concerns that if we, that if we adopt something that's so tight, there is no one in the country that can do it, that the legislature might come back and write us around this table out at all, and just say, well, we're just going to do our own thing. I, I would hope that wouldn't happen. We would go over there, Jessica and I would go over there and go from office to office and fight against that, as we, but, but as I told you all last month, the original proposal did cut us out. And we went from office to office and meeting to meeting and phone call after phone call and said, we're going to fight you, you will have to run over our bodies with a bus unless you give the board the rulemaking authority for this. And they, and they did. So my fear is that after we fought so hard for that, if then we pass a rule that's so strict that nobody qualifies, then they'll come back to you and say, to us... if then we pass a rule that's so strict that nobody qualifies, then they'll come back to you and say, to us, and say, "Well, Mackey, you're out. You and, you and your board are out." So, I do worry about that. Now, I know some people are thinking, "Well, that means you're making a political decision." But I mean, but that is a part of what we have to think about. I think adding the CAPE accreditation in was a big step, because that, that's gonna rule out any, certainly any fly-by-night organizations.
And Dr. Mackey, I think some of this affirmation was put in, because we were trying to support the colleges and universities that had come before us.
Absolutely. And this is something that several of the folks in the room do want. There's no question about it. And I have great respect for them, and for all of you, and it's just a matter of trying to find balance.
So, before we take input from them, Dr. Mackey, to clarify what you answered, Ms. West, your recommendation would be the policy without the purple?
Yes, sir, that'd be my recommendation.
Okay, I just want to clarify in a positive sense, not a negative sense. Okay, I think now we should allow the deans to speak.
I wanna ask Jessica.
Yes, ma'am.
Restate that law that you said, because it opened up another avenue. I guess I wanna make sure that I'm hearing you, what you're really saying.
So, the part, and I was actually reading at the very beginning of a law, and you know, when a law, when a bill gets passed, it'll say things in the beginning that are the summary, and then that summary never actually makes it into the code. What I'm reading from is like, like a summary.
And that comes into play when there's a lawsuit, so.
Yeah, but the part, the part that I'm.
But that's not part of the law necessarily.
This part that I did read, it is actually found in 16-23-3. So, sometimes it doesn't, this part made it into the law. It says, "Further, it is the intent of the legislature that policies, rules, and regulations impacting alternative teaching certificates and teacher preparation programs shall create an equal opportunity for design, approval, delivery, implementation, continued review for accredited teacher education programs, and continued review," sorry.
Need another slide here.
I do. It is the intent of the legislature that policies, rules, regulations impacting alternative teaching certificate and teacher preparation programs shall create an equal opportunity for design, approval, delivery, implementation, and continued review for accredited teacher education programs at a traditional institution of higher education, as are created for alternative teacher preparation programs offered by approved on your list, offered by those approved on your list. So, that's telling us that the innovation that we have at traditional institutions of higher learning, we should give them equal opportunities to be just as innovative, and just as flexible in their delivery, as we are with these other ones that we put on the list.
But you stated, "We already have a policy for innovation."
We do.
So, we already do that, right?
And we might wanna change that. We might wanna go to, we might wanna open it up.
Not many of them have competition.
I, I wanna say that, that UAB Teach, and I recently went and saw some stuff on that, but I think UAB Teach is an example of one of the innovative, like, they submitted to us, "We want to do this program." It is not inside their educator prep program. It is within the university, it's outside of that. And when students come in, if a student declares they wanna be a math or science person, they will recruit that student to say, "Would you also like for us to be able to train you that you can teach too?" Like, we'll give you both different, you know, we'll do both. It's not the traditional pathway, but it is an innovative pathway, and we have approved it, and they can recommend teachers for certification.
It came when Dr. Weiss was superintendent, and Jane Meyer was the one that studied their application, and had lots of questions. They refined, they refined again, they refined again, and then ultimately, that it was approved. And, but it was UAB that came to us and said, you know, "We would like to implement this program. We feel like there's a need, especially for STEM teachers in our area," and so, they got approval.
They worked with us, but.
Right, and it's expanded, because the legislature gave funding to the STEM council, the state STEM council, to do grants. And I think there are now six institutions somewhere in the road who applied for those grants, and that, so that UTEACH model is being extended. So, we do have, I mean, that's a great example of something. It started as a out-of-the-box innovative program. They worked through the kinks, got the money, because it's an expensive program, institutions, it's hard for them to just pay for that, because they're, they're basically comping some prices, but now the legislature's come along and funded it. University of West Alabama has a rural educators program, where they do, they actively recruit some people who I think don't have college degrees, or they don't have degrees in education, to work in rural schools, and they, they work some special online and night school stuff, so they can become certified teachers. So, and that was done through an innovative process, where they said, "We wanna do something that doesn't meet any of your rules. We're gonna create something," and it got approved. Those are the only two that come to the top of my mind. There are probably some others out there, but.
And those people, they did not graduate from the traditional educator prep with that specific degree in teaching, but the institution is recommending them for licensure, because the institution says, "We did this training with them, and we are recommending them for teacher license."
To give you a personal example, I have an MBA in finance from an institution in another state. And when I came, employed by Dr. Mackey, Dr. Teague, I didn't need the credential. But then Jane Meyer examined my coursework specifically, and gave me an administrative certificate, or awarded me, or said I had earned. So, this is not a new innovation, and it's certainly one answer to teacher shortages, better than just reducing test scores, because they're very highly qualified, educated, technical people, particularly in the STEM category. And I think that may be our target. I don't know about how to be a science or reading teacher. That's not my purview, I leave that to others. But I do see some significant strength in content areas. There were schools that, when I went to school, you got a degree, a BA in history, but the state of Georgia provided you do take certain coursework, and you would get credentials in teacher education. But, that's basically where I see us going, and I don't object to that at all.
I do want you to, to just go back to paragraph one, realize that if, whatever you approve, well, either one of these versions that you approve, paragraph one says, not only, so this would set up the criteria, but then those organizations we would bring back to you. So, if it's, you know, ABC Teacher Prep organization, we would have to go through and verify that they met the criteria in here, that they weren't, you know, worked in five other states, and then bring it to you and say, "State Board, we recommend that you add ABC Teacher Prep to the list of approved." So, so not only, once, if you, once you approve something, you're not just saying, any organization that shows up at the state department's door is gonna get in. We have the responsibility then to go through a checklist with them, make sure they meet the criteria, and then bring those back to you, and say, "We, this organization meets the criteria." So, you'll have another, there's another quality assurance step, and there are actually two more steps beyond just putting this into the code. So, you would know who those organizations are, and you could require them to come to a work session and ask them questions about their program before you vote.
Do any of the deans wanna comment on the omission of the purple? Do they have a copy of what you've got?
I think they do. We had extra copies, I tried to pass them around. Now, they got it like you did. You know, just, yeah, the purple, just, the purples they only changed.
Dr. Burt Terry, and I know he's gonna start.
Dr. Shemek's coming in.
You need, you gotta bring a backup.
You say, "Dean number two," somewhat, for all of them.
Well, I do wanna comment about the language that was included in the legislation. That, that actually came from meetings we had as allocated with Representative Baker, Representative Collins. When we heard about the legislation being formed and being talked about, we had concerns about equity. And they, we asked if we could, if they would be open to adding something to the legislation that would allow for that equity. And so, we, we wrote, we helped write that. I remember on a Friday evening with Katie, Katie going, "Does this sound legislative to you?" I think it does, and we find it in there. And so, our interpretation of that equity piece is a bit different. When, when we proposed it, we saw and sort of assumed that the high standards that we are held accountable to would be held, would be the same for these outside vendors. And so, when I hear us being invited to be like these programs, I don't see them as innovative. I see them as cutting corners, and I do not see them as high quality. And so, in that sort of proposal, I see that lowering our standards to their standards. And that, that I think is a concern for a lot of us in higher education. But that being said, I think the direction of this is very positive. Like Dr. Mackey said, the CAPE ingredient there is significant. That is a robust process. The inclusion of the continuous improvement process will be helpful. And so, now with this purple thing, with, with the purple information about instructor, Dr. Shemek can talk about that.
Thank you.
Sorry.
You're doing such a great job. This is something that we have to do. So, I'm, you know, the, one of the things that really impressed me with the board is that y'all are very concerned about quality, and what you're saying, if you take this out, is that if, you know, the credentials of the people preparing, the instructions for these modules, that these people will do in this program, is not important. Because we're held to this standard, but you're saying they don't have to be held to a quality standard of faculty. So, anyone can create, you're not held, there's no standard for who creates, or who's on their staff, to create the instruction that is so important for keeping people in the field, and again, not being what we talked about last time, not being a, you know, where us, we're here every year, because there's this teacher shortage, because they're coming through these pathways, and then leaving in a few years, because they weren't prepared. So, I'm very concerned that you would remove this.
So, in the CAPE, when you go through that process, are there faculty requirements for that?
The CAPE, I don't know. No, we have, we have requirements.
Yes, there are faculty requirements. You have to do a list. I know with the state, you have to submit a list of faculty requirements, yes.
So, I'm wondering if, under the CAPE, you're accomplishing a lot of this already. That's my question, I guess. I'm sorry, that's a good question.
And if that, if that's the case, then why not remove it from the code?
I'm sorry?
Why not remove it from the Educator Preparation Code in Alabama?
As soon as all of our, our kids, right, because we're saying on the 20th, the 26R right now.
I'm letting everybody talk.
That we go by as faculty qualifications. So, if you're gonna take this out, why not remove that, and say that we made it from CAPE? Because they, they're very different.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
There's no problem. Just as a reminder, probably, I think, maybe the month after Dr. Meyer retired, guys, remember, I came to allocate, and I thought it was tomatoes and watermelons and everything coming at me, partly because of the code, and it was dealing with, there was a section dealing with staff, faculty requirements. As a result, we put together a committee, and it has been hard getting a good committee together, because of all of the extra commitments that our deans and I'll have going on. But we've finally been able to get a working committee together, and we start this work in January, actually doing a full review of the Ed Prep chapter, and with special emphasis on that particular section. So, many of those things that are state-required, they could possibly be changed. So, I just want us to keep that, and you guys, you received a memo, an email from Siobhan, letting us know that we finally got enough people to participate, because we were emailing constantly, trying to get, and I know schedules were busy, but we've been, we've been able to get that done, and we start that work next month. We just didn't wanna do anything during the holidays, with many schools being closed. But that could address that particular area. If it's removed from this part that we're submitting, we can have a deep dive conversation of what does that need to look like for Alabama colleges in alignment with CAPE. So, that could be something we could just wash from the table. But you guys know, because we've been in those conversations, about that has been kind of restrictive for you all.
The other language in the purple, for newly educated programs, one person with an earned doctorate, many institutions hire a lot of adjuncts, and you may have not a percentage of persons with earned doctors, but one person with a lot of adjuncts working. So, how do you relate to that, to equality, versus what another institution who simply is taking a person with, with a high level of education in a doctorate, in a doctorate, a subject matter, and giving them a credential, versus you using adjuncts, which may have only a master's degree?
Most of ours have a doctorate, but.
Most of yours, but Dr. Burt Terry can answer. We know who we're talking about.
Ours have doctorates and masters, at least a minimum of a masters, but I don't know that we know. I don't know if there's transparency with some of these outside providers, as far as who is behind the curtain grading the assignments. It's kind of the Wizard of Oz there, and so, I don't know. They don't publish their faculty, and who is writing the curriculum, and who's behind it. So, that, that would be, that would be a question I have.
This, Dr. Reynolds, if I may, this question that you guys are dealing with is one that is, you know, is, is essentially what was before the legislature last time, too, on how do we solve, and how do we best address a population of people who might be interested in teaching, but they're not gonna do this, and they want something different? Because we, we are still pushing people to educator preparation programs, right? Like, best quality, we won't.
You are, I'm not.
Well, that's what.
Not the environment I live in, we're not. We're looking at people who are highly skilled, who are engineered, who are very professional, and they exist in every aspect of the community. There are people in Selma, Alabama, who may have a degree in chemistry. If they didn't have to spend a whole lot of money, would be glad to be a teacher.
I think that's the population of people who.
And that's the population of legislators who talk to me about, that are interested in.
I'm, I'm not interested in going back to college. I have a degree, I'm not interested in going back to college, but I might wanna teach. What can we do as policies to get the, get that group of people, some of which may be great teachers, but we need to study and evaluate?
I was not interested in BS in nursing. I didn't need a BS in nursing. I took a program that didn't require those things, even though UAH was in the environment, I chose not to go there. And I know that there are plenty of people who have skill sets in, in, in physics, and chemistry, and mathematics. I'm an MBA person in education. I'm as equally qualified to do education management, in what I was taught, and somebody who went in EDU course and got a new school, a degree in education administration. And I'm not just bragging on me, I'm telling you, even Jane Meyer asserted that.
Even?
Thirty years ago, or forty years ago, whatever.
If I, er, effectively do have a program now, our provisional approach, that we already have in place, and that was actually legislated many years ago, but with that particular program, a person who has a degree and wants to enter the profession of teaching, and a school system wants to have them as a teacher, they can begin that program now, and the end result, after going through that program, there are four courses that they're required to take.
Right.
Equals a Class B professional educator certificate in that area. So, if I am an engineer, and I want to come back and do that to teach secondary mathematics, which, you know, certainly we'd love to have those people, I can be part of that program, as long as the school system wants to, you know, support me through that process. So, we do already have that in place. We are partnered with our universities on that, because the courses come from the universities.
So, that's already.
We just wanted to put that out there.
That's in the innovative program you talked about.
That's, that's been around for a while. Where this comes to run is, if that, that person comes to us, says, "I wanna teach, school this room wants to hire him." We tell them, "These are the four courses you need." They go to a university and take the courses.
Right.
There are people who are saying, "I'm not going back to college. I don't want to go back to college." Maybe it's a cost factor, whatever the factor may be, that their life, you know, doesn't do that, they could still have a school, a skill set. What can we do? They could still have a school, a skill set. What can we do to let that person into at least the opportunities to be licensed? Not, you know, we're not just going to give them a license, but it's an opportunity to prove that they should be licensed.
I want to go back to what Ms. Martin said. And I'm thinking, because we sure don't want to give the impression that we are trying to encourage or circumvent or diminish our traditional educational programs. We really want to make sure that we maintain a level of quality. You know, we, we talked about teacher shortage and so that is, you know, I'm trying to get some clarity here. I heard what she said. How can we find a happy medium so that it's a win-win for everybody? We know we've got to do this, okay? That's not optional. However, it seems to be that the universities have a concern about the requirements and standard that they're being held to. This is my question to Ms. Martin. I want to make sure I heard her clearly. Say that there is conversation about the current difference in what's required at the traditional universities to what, what we are asking these teachers, these new companies to come in, okay? Am I, is that what I heard you say?
Not just that, but the entire ed prep chapter. So it contains pieces of what's in this law. So my thought process is that whatever the differences are that are located not in a law, but in our ed chapter can be addressed and we could have that, you know, comfort zone built into there. Because it's CAPE required anyway.
Right.
So we could look at CAPE's requirements and look at what we developed some years ago. I'm not certain when that was developed and see where we can come to that medium.
So in other words, we're already working on a process that could possibly eliminate the problem that we have today in regards to the information in the purple.
On faculty requirements?
Exactly.
Yes, ma'am.
So it will be a win-win for both, for everybody, everybody wins.
However, we've got to do something that's got to be voted on at some point. We can't continue to talk about it. What we have is what had been recommended from the colleges and the universities. So what we've got to decide, what has been recommended, is if we're going to remove this purple. That's what I said earlier, that this purple represented what the colleges and universities, you know, recommended to us and we were trying to support. We can continue to talk and talk, but we're going to have to vote on something, so, you know.
And we can't vote here.
No, we, no, we can't. But the discussion, as far as when you just asked, what are we recommending, is what's got to go on the table.
It seems to me that the superintendent is proposing a document not including the purple. It would seem prudent to me, since we can't vote here, to move forward with the document that we were sent in advance, which was different than the one that didn't have the purple. And that that go on the agenda to see what happens in January. And without objection, we have this on a work session, we'll move forward with the proposal that we'd already had, which didn't include the language in the purple. So without objection, that's the agenda item, Dr. Mackey. I heard no objection.
Well, I can object. I mean.
You can object what?
Well, I think Dr. Chester won't say something.
I'm just trying to get some clarity.
Yes.
Well, the clarity is to remove what's in the purple and go forward in January to either vote up or down what we have excluding what's in here.
That's correct.
And then the colleges continue to work and resolve and to study, resolve the issues that are troubling.
This is part of that code that we're going to.
Right, right. But y'all will, it's the intention that you will continue to work together.
CAPE might, CAPE might fix the whole problem.
So it's a two-part.
So let's, yeah.
So we can't let the two-parter, the second part of the two-part fall apart.
And just. And just to hold us accountable, could, could the board get a bye when we would receive that information? I just, I don't want to leave this conversation without some word that, that we address their concern in the code.
Correct.
Because if we can address this and address their concern in a 60-day compression or 90-day compression, I think that that might serve us all really well.
If we're working on this already.
I would go much further down.
Let me, let me ask.
Working on this all already.
We're, we're working on it starting in January on that committee. And this is part of that notebook of code that we're working on. So one option is leave this in and we'll take it out when we take all the other stuff out.
No, ma'am. The superintendent is recommending, as I understand, you clarify what you're saying, Dr. Mackey. You said you would recommend a proposal without the purple. Did you say that?
I will clarify.
I thought I heard you say.
My recommendation is that the board not include the purple.
Okay.
What we will vote on will be what the board, y'all collectively decide which piece you want to vote on. Now you collectively say, we want to vote on, on this, and you may still vote it down. But I want direction in what you want it to look like. May I suggest a possible to build on, build on what Dr. Chestnut and Ms. West were talking about? I think Dr. Richardson too. So what if we, we could come back, if we took the purple out, which would be my recommendation to you, and by recommendation, I mean, that's what I would suggest. I don't mean a formal recommendation for the board. We could also come back to you next month with a recommendation for those institutions that have met CAPE accreditation and are fully CAPE accredited, that we remove the faculty requirement from them too. We help.
From y'all.
From the code.
From the code. We've just come and strike that in the code before, because what I don't want to do, that, the work they're doing is humongous. And I know what Ms. West said. I heard you, like, if we could say, can that all be done in 60 days? I don't want them to be in a rush to fix that big notebook, because I want it fixed right. That's one of my goals for my career, is to get that fixed, and it has been for years. So give them, if they say they need six months or a year to do that, fine. But it does not mean we couldn't come back and take this one section out of the codes more quickly.
Which section?
The purple out of the regular code for the current teachers, colleges that are.
Who are credited.
CAPE accredited. Now, I did look up earlier, Dr. Richardson's my helper and I always got her in trouble when I got in trouble. So then, your report says there are 26 institutions, 20 of them are CAPE accredited. That's last year's information. There are now only 25 institutions because Judson has closed.
Oh, that's right.
Of the, the five that are not accredited, they are all in the process of seeking accreditation now. And most of them are like at the end of the process. They are very close. And we think in '23, we'll get that accreditation. One of those institutions has run into significant problems. And I think it deals with actually their faculty not meeting the CAPE standards. And so they, we're not sure if they're going to be able to jump through that hoop or not. But all the public institutions are accredited. The ones that are not are private, they're small, they have, you know, and they're all good colleges. I have no question about that, but they, but one of them seems to have run into some significant issues that we're trying to help them through. The others appear to be, you know, appear to be well on their way to getting to CAPE accreditation. So, so anyway, I could, if the, if the consensus were, let's move forward without the purple, then my commitment to you is I will bring you another recommendation. That would be to strike this purple language, which was taken verbatim from the code, what we require for our current institutions. To strike that from the code for institutions that meet CAPE accreditation. I, I worry that in the future, if we could take, if we don't leave something in there, we could end up with institutions that don't meet either. But as they all become CAPE accredited, then that would be, then there would be a third change. Because hopefully by the time they come back to you with the new notebook, that won't be this thick, but maybe this thick, it would, all those institutions would have met CAPE accreditation and then we can strike it entirely.
That's good.
I can let.
It's coming.
That's, I think.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
Yes, sir. Sorry, sir.
We're going to adopt one resolution for public comment next month.
Yes, sir.
That's going to be this document we have excluding the purple.
Yes, sir. That's right.
What's going to, and then if you're, are you going to bring?
And I will bring to you at the work session next month.
I was going to clarify. You said you were going to bring to us.
At the work session next month, I will bring you another code recommendation that will be to strike this same purple language from the current institutions as long as they are CAPE accredited. And that will come to you in the work session. If the board so, you know, feels good about it still, that could come to a vote in February and then could be made law for the code process by April. So you vote on this final in, in March, that in April. And then when the whole chip process thing is done, we could possibly just eliminate the, this language entirely in the code, assuming that all the institutions were. Because that process may just say, you got to be CAPE accredited. And then, and then, and that realized that one of the reasons we have such a cumbersome code is that it was created in the assumption that institutions were not going to be accredited. We're going to make, we're basically, the State Department of Education, the State Board of Education, my apologies, had its own accreditation process separate from the accrediting agency. And when we, if ultimately what we say we want to do is we just want all the institutions to be accredited. And if we think that accrediting agency has a good reputation and good standards itself, there's no reason for us to create a separate accreditation standard. Which is what we do with our high schools. We say they need to be accredited through whatever it is, CAGIA.
While we're looking at the quality of teacher preparation programs, I would like to ask, as a point of personal privilege, that you examine the practice of having.
Yes, sir.
Intern teachers be independent without supervision. Because I think that somewhere in the code, that we need to strengthen that requirement. Because you talked about interns and those requirements, that we're going to get into quality and assurances in the schools of education who are practicing this other variation of what we call traditional teacher preparation programs. While we're examining it with the deans, we need to look at that function. Because I think that's, in my estimation, as a, as a teacher and the leader, that internship, and Ms. Bell and I both voiced the professionalism that's associated with that, I would like the department to examine that as we have now, are we now doing that?
We'll put that in with that whole chip process. We will, we'll add that in.
And that would make you very happy or less unhappy. All right, with that understanding, it's my understanding, we will move ahead with this item on the agenda without the purple. Is that, is that the consensus? Without voting, that's the item we'll see on the agenda, Dr. Mackey.
That's the item that will be on there to vote in January. Yes, sir.
And knowing that, going forward to remove that information from the law?
That will be in the work session next month.
We should work, we're going to discuss it. We may or may not. We can't commit to you. Item seven, I'm speaking myself.
Item seven is first grade readiness. So y'all talked about this last month at the beginning. It was a superintendent's presentation. I know Jessica talked with you about it. I was still downstairs, I think, with some media folks. So I missed that whole conversation. But I understand it went pretty well. Everybody seemed to be on board with the current language. So the process then, because that was not proposed to you as a eventual could-be voting item, we just bring it back this month. I don't know if you feel like you want to discuss it any further. We don't necessarily, if you're good with it, we just, before we put it on the vote in January, we had to put it on an action item for this month.
Dr. Mackey, I know I missed the presentation. I apologize. But I had a question about the assessment. So many of the assessments the board votes on and they're vetted and approved by a committee of sorts and then it's brought to the board to vote. And so I was just curious why this one wasn't the first grade entry readiness assessment? Why the board wouldn't vote on it? Or at least it doesn't specify.
Policy?
The board. What's part A, 2A?
I have a policy of this proposal on that page.
I mean, that's, we, we certainly could do that. It's not anything. We just bring it back. The, typically the ones the board, as far as I know, the only ones the board has approved in the past are the ones that are part of our accountability plan. So like the A-CAP, the ACT. If it's part of the accountability plan, the board approves it. If it's a formative assessment, they're not board approved. So because it's not a high-stakes test, it normally just wouldn't be. But I mean, it can be, it can be if that's what something y'all want to do.
And I'll, I'll bring up an issue that I know we've talked about before, but several of my schools, I was visiting one the other day and it was county system and elementary and primary principals. And I said, is anything on your mind? It was just an open-ended question. Is anything on your mind, any concerns that you have? And several of them shot up their hands and said, allocids, we don't like it and y'all make us do it. Now that's kindergarten, you know, it's a kindergarten assessment. And, but they have asked for, I said, well, there's a waiver process. You can ask for a waiver. You don't have to use that one. And so I gave them the information of how to apply for the waiver. They did. They were rejected. And they said, no more waivers were given out. You must use allocids. And so allocids may be a strong assessment. But I think after that conversation, and they are not the only school, I had another school system, city school system, that also applied for the waiver and was rejected, very upset. And so I guess that gives me pause. It gives me concern about an assessment without the board discussing it, reviewing it, and having it vetted. And so that's why I bring that up, just as when I saw that and I saw, you know, where's the board's involvement in this? I, I didn't see it.
And send those folks to me. I can tell you, I've never had not a superintendent or principal bring up a negative thing about allocids. So that's interesting.
Well.
I'm new at the business, so.
I have and you, you, one of the schools is now in your district, so. And so.
See, have the superintendents to call. I don't mind. If you give me their names afterwards, don't say them out right now. Then I'll get, I'll, I'll hit caller or should get Chuck to call. We'll, we'll talk to them about what the issues are. I know when it was initially rolled out, one of the things we talked about was the time that it takes to do it, but we.
That was the start of the angst, but there has been more since then. A lot of it is they don't get feedback. They don't know why they're doing it and they never get feedback. And there's, I think they told me there's 20, I went and observed it because I had so many people complaining and observed in 26 questions, many with parts A, B, and C, and it has to be individually administered, right? So it's a, one, you can't just do like multiple test and they do it. It has to be, you have to watch that child, how long can they hold their leg up? How long can they do that? So you have to do each child. And I said, how long does it take to administer the assessment for each child? And they said roughly two hours a child. And that's at the beginning of the kindergarten year, and that's a lot to ask of our teachers on top of everything else that they're doing. And so I'm not, I mean, it may be the best assessment out there. I don't know that.
This deals with first grade.
Right, right, but, but.
You were talking about kindergarten. I'm trying to understand, because this is predicated by.
First grade.
The law that didn't pass, that was proposed by a former member of your district.
I couldn't. I couldn't agree with you more. But it worries me when there's an assessment that we don't have involvement in the discussion about that assessment, the pros and the cons. And so all I'm trying to get is.
Allocids is not the only assessment available.
Well, it's not. You're absolutely right, but it's the one that has been used. And so.
It's the one that some use.
No, 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 no. In kindergarten, all of them use it unless they got the waiver.
It's the only one.
Unless they got the waiver. So Dr. Mackey, Bonnie Short has, you know how, last time we talked about this should be something simple, like it shouldn't have to be allocated. And I went back to ask, cause I knew Bonnie and Tracy Strickland had both done some things in the past. And so she's developed kind of a framework and suggests that bringing in, we bring in our DUC partners, ARI, all of our task forces, some teachers in kindergarten, first grade, and that the test should just do physical, language, cognitive, and it's the, it's like working memory skills. Can they speak in complete sentences? A much shorter version of things that are in allocids, but not a full administration of allocids, and it wouldn't cost the district anything.
Exactly. That's what I remember our discussion with Miss Short, it'll be a simplified process. And that's why I don't understand your implication that allocids is inherent in this policy. I don't think that's true.
I'm not sure that it is, but what I'm saying is the board needs to be involved in the discussions.
So we, so you, I mean, I'm fine with, we certainly can extend A to say, an assessment of essential developmental and physical skills as approved by the State Board of Education.
That's all we want. That's it.
But we had this discussion two years ago, and I guess maybe, I, I wanna be careful that we, that we're all of a mind, that we're okay with our staff and, and field developing assessment. In other words, normally when we do that, that means we're gonna RFP and hire a vendor, and they're gonna be vendors calling wanting to say, we wanna do that test. And that's, and then it just gets more and more complicated, which I think is why they're, we're hearing from Bonnie and the literacy folks, they don't want it to get complicated. They want something that's short, simple, easy to administer. So you're saying, we can develop that and bring that back to you, but you're not looking for us to do an RFP, select a vendor, have a system of, you know.
I would want like some teachers involved in the process, you know, have your stakeholders involved. But yeah, that the board has involvement.
The significant, I'm sorry, one more time. The significant component is that each local board consistent shall adopt and implement. So we're leaving that responsibility and that assessment instrument to the local board. And those of us who believe in local control are providing that because it's entry into the first grade. This is not entry into the kindergarten. If you have kindergarten, you're automatically eligible for first grade. These are for those church students who choose not to attend first grade. It's a mechanism that's answering what the legislature attempted to do that failed. So we're trying, our whole idea was to do something so that we don't abdicate our responsibility for first grade entry. And I think that the State Department and the staff have capabilities to do that. And if we find needs to add something later, then, but I would like to proceed with this policy as written, because we fully discussed that and the rationale behind it. And it also leaves that responsibility for whatever assessment is the local board. And if you talk to people that they don't like allocids, they need to read the first line of this policy, cause that's where.
So they can use any assessment they choose.
It says so, that's what it says.
Yeah, the current, and that, again, you missed the discussion last month. The current proposal is, you're just saying every local board will have a policy.
Right.
And they will pick an assessment.
And we're still gonna develop a sample pool.
Yeah, we'll.
But they can choose anyone they want, they don't have to ask weights.
And we're not micromanaging. Our discussion last week was the fact that we're not micromanaging any system.
So they don't have to use allocids.
Excuse me, if they have a complaint where somebody wants to have a child in the first grade, they don't have an assessment that answers that question, the liability rests with them, because this whole thing is on the, each local board. That's the first line, it's the most important part of this policy. Without objection, we will put this agenda, this item as it's written on the agenda, Dr. Mackey. I would now call Ms. West who wants, who's asked to have an opportunity to discuss another matter.
Real quick, and I apologize, cause I've got a scoop for an appointment this afternoon. So next month, we're to have our retreat, and board members, I just need one little piece of homework from you. I need to know if you will be in attendance to spend the night, January, excuse me, January 25th, that was the date I gave you last month. You would come to Auburn, I'm arranging for your hotel and all of that. I've just got to get numbers. And I've got a block, but I need to drill down into the exact number of hotel rooms. And I'll reach out to Ms. Manning and confirm with her. And then just to let you know real quick, and I'll send this out to you in email, we would arrive, hopefully around three o'clock in the afternoon, check in, have a four o'clock tour of the Rain Culinary Arts Center for about an hour. You would be given time to rest for a few minutes, returning the emails. We'd have a dinner that evening there at the hotel. And then the next morning, a very brief breakfast, a one-hour meeting and overview. And then we will be going to tour two career tech centers and talk with industry people and folks in higher ed who are working with our students in dual enrollment. Hopefully to give you sort of a robust version of what's available for students coming out of our high schools that may wanna transition to a two-year or four-year college and also work at the same time. So you will be out on the 26th, hopefully by 1:30 in the afternoon, able to return back to Montgomery or back to your home to work. So if that sounds acceptable, I just.
I wanna ask a procedural question.
Sure.
This accommodation.
Yes.
Is that paid for by the state or us or expenses, and how's that to be done?
I was.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was told by the hotel to bring your state credential, your badge at check-in, and you receive the per diem rate for government agency.
We'll get that. So I think they're gonna offer us the government rate, which I think's really good. You get per diem, just like we would normally like you to come to a meeting here. We are gonna get your, I don't, so we, Ms. West has worked it out, so that meals, all the meals are being provided. So your per diem should be enough.
By the Rain, that's right.
And she's gonna launch the next day, so that, so your per diem should cover the hotel costs. And then, of course, we'll pay mileage from your home there, just like we do to a regular meeting.
And you said arrive by door, is that what you said? I'm sorry. You should check in around three, our tour would begin at four, but I will email all this out to you. I just wanted to give you briefly kind of what to expect in terms of being away from home and then getting back home. And if you have any specific questions, just email me. If you have any specific needs, dietary needs, let me know.
So basically, we will tour, and then have dinner on the first day, then the next morning, maybe a brief meeting and tour. So we basically will be more interacting than getting information.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We're not gonna have like a formal agenda where we're discussing items like we normally do in the work session.
We're not gonna have lunch, like you said.
Strictly, and it, an opportunity for us to get outside of Montgomery and see some other things.
Thank you, that's great.
That sounds great.
That's exciting.
I would like to thank Ms. West for innumerable hours and creativity, because.
We haven't gotten there yet.
Because what you and I know is that once you do something, whatever happens is your responsibility, good, bad, or ugly.
Good, bad, or ugly.
And thank you very much, Tracy, for your report.
You're welcome. Great job. And we'll have transportation between places. Mr. Markham and I are working on that, so he's been wonderful. So we'll, I'll email everything out to you. And I appreciate Nick talking it over with me and making sure that the governor would be pleased with what we're doing on our retreat.
Thank you, Ms. West. Once again, you did a fantastic job. Go sell some real estate and take care of Paul.
Why, can we go to item two?
Yes, ma'am. I was gonna let her leave if that's.
That's okay. I was surprised you were gonna skip over.
May I ask this, before we go to, we have only one program that's up for review next month, and that's Troy University. And I know this gentleman probably would like to see if there are any questions from the board on that, before we go to two, and then we can go.
Did I miss that one?
It's number eight, first grade readiness.
I only have seven on this.
They're in District Two and they're wonderful. Thank you.
I can't, any questions for Troy State University while they're here? Hearing no questions, we now turn, I recognize Ms., Ms. McCarty for her questions, board questions.
But as she starts the questions, I wanna say, I'm very excited about this Troy program. It is a, it's not just a no, it is a elementary STEM master's degree. It's very innovative and creative, and I, I really am looking forward to them seeing if we can get some, some, so it says master's program, so most likely it'd be current teachers that would be applying for it. I think it's just a great idea. I'm really looking forward to it. Thank you.
We'd love to hear all about it.
Innovation, thank you.
Thank you for sitting and no questions.
Thanks, ma'am.
That's the best.
There you go, you're happy with that.
And there are other things that are approval of programs on the resolution.
The, uh, yes, sir.
Through fourteen.
Uh, nine through fourteen are the Presidential Science and Math Teacher Awards. Those, we, we do those every year. They used to be done in the fall, they're, they're, this year it got kinda kicked a little bit, but, so they'll be coming to you in January. We are working on a, a program with those folks. You remember, they come to the meeting and in some years, I think the last time we did it, we took y'all to lunch, it was like a rainy day, we carted everybody to lunch, you didn't get stayed for the whole lunch, cause we had to get out. So we're trying to do like we did the arts thing last year, to do that, something maybe the afternoon before to recognize them, so it doesn't feel so rushed and like they're not getting their due diligence. So probably that afternoon before the January board meeting, those people, no, I'm sorry, not January, cause it would come, yeah, I guess it is, there's a work session this month. So they would come in the afternoon before, you'd have some time with those math and science presidential award winners, and then we would recognize them the next morning at the meeting, like we did the arts stuff last spring at the Shakespeare Festival. So they're working on that. I will try to get you details as quickly as possible. This kind of, these got added because they were, they were not in what you got sent last Thursday, they've been added since.
So I didn't have to be on Saturday.
Yeah, because we realized they were coming in.
It's on schedule.
Coming up quickly.
All right, hearing no questions on nine through fourteen, I will recognize Dr. McCarty to initiate item two.
Thank you. One question I have, it's a request really, is I know at the end of the year, Justin, we've got a whole lot of reports that go out, like it's the ETF budget, it has certain reports. I think Dawn mentioned this morning, computer science has a report, I think AmSta has a report at the end of the year. Can we get advanced copies of those, I mean, before they get to the legislature, or at least on the same day that they get them? So that we aren't blindsided by a legislator calling and saying, what is this on page four here and we haven't seen it yet? So if we could get a list of, or, or the entire report, I think that would be really helpful. And then I also had a question, and Tanya, I think you serve on this committee, but the numeracy task force, is that, are we on schedule with that? I didn't see, is Dr. Anderson, is she here? I don't know. But are we on schedule with hitting our target dates as far as what the law said?
I think Dr. Markham sent that schedule out to you and I.
He did, he did.
It appeared to me that we were on schedule.
I'm not sure about that.
Well, did you have a question about that?
Well, just where are.
We are, yeah, absolutely, we're on, on track with it. Now, there are some things like, the law had some timelines in it that were not meetable. And Senator Orr and Representative Baker realized that, and they said, you know, you can't, you can't do something that physically can't be done. So for instance, the, you know, the task force was originally supposed to meet, well, we did make the timeline, it had to meet by a certain date, but it wasn't supposed to meet until you hired a person to direct it. You couldn't hire a person to direct it in that time legally. And so what we did is we convened the task force, I just chaired the committee myself. So we, we met the letter of the law, but we didn't do any work, obviously, till we could get them convened. Yeah, that is moving along great. We have all but two of our regional specialists now hired, and Dr. Anderson's working really hard on those two. I met with them Monday. That was the, they've had a series of meetings where they're doing their training, the work they're gonna need to be doing in the school. We have one for each inter-service region, and that is done. So there is, they are at least eleven. But we have two regions that need more support, as we've talked about, and they cannot, you know, she's still looking for two more people. But we do have at least one person per region, a great team, I feel really good about them.
Are you optimistic about summer? Is it their required summer camp starting in 2023? And are they, are the plans, cause I mean, we know that you have to start planning for summer like in January.
So, so that, there's no, the districts, that's a requirement on the districts. And yes, they're well aware of that, to be planning for summer math camp this coming summer. So that's, but that's a district thing. For us, I was talking about what we're responsible for doing. So that, there is a full day in-person math task force meeting.
January third.
January third. We do have two slots on the task force still to be filled. One is because of the lady who was recommended by the state STEM council, then fortunately for us, applied for one of the specialist jobs and got it. So she can't be on the, the task force and do that. I, I guess technically she could, but she doesn't meet the criteria anymore, I don't think, for the STEM council's appointment. So they are working on another appointment piece.
Let me interrupt you, but yeah, Dr. Matt has got, got us one yesterday afternoon, I sent.
And then we have one other person we're looking for, and Ms. McCray and I have been working on that, or she's been working with Mr. Markham on it. So, so they're good. So that, but that task force will meet in, in early January. There will be, so that we've identified our, the schools that are gonna get full support next year, so those schools will get math coaches, the money's there for them to hire. So yeah, it's all, it's all coming along. Now, the problem is, of course, you know, we all wish that all this could have been done a year ago, but we don't have any concerns about how it's progressing. What you're gonna see is as, again, there were those artificial timelines that were put in, that, that they agreed were not attainable, talking to the sponsors of the bill. And I thought I'd said it back, back before, I might have said some of it, but I asked them, you want us to do it right, or you want us to do it fast? And they said, do it right. Take the time you need, those timelines don't matter, get it right. And that's why we took longer to hire the right person to lead the work. So what's gonna happen now is those timelines are gonna start to compress and come together. You will, there will be some issues this summer, as districts are required under the law to offer summer math camp, but they will not all have a math coach. Now, that's a little different than literacy, because the Literacy Act did not require them to start offering reading camps until they had a reading coach. But the math thing, the math bill says they have to offer math camp even if they don't have a math coach to run it. So it becomes a district responsibility. That's not our responsibility. We will give them money for the, there's money to pass through for those camps, so that they'll have, to hire the teachers and all that. But they will, so the only angst I've heard from, from some of the superintendents is, they are required to run math camp, but they don't yet have a math coach. But that's, I mean, that's in the legislation, and that's something we pointed out as it was being passed, that the legislature wanted to leave that. So that you may hear some complaints on that, but they will still get the funding for, to hire teachers. The other thing we hear some concerns about is that it does make a long summer for some kids. So they have a 70-hour, I think, I'm looking at Ms. Segler, cause she's on the literacy task force, I think it's a 70-hour requirement for literacy, and then the math is some less than that, I think. But if a, but, but children could end up being in summer camp for like 120 hours, which is basically their whole summer. Now, they, again, the children are not required to attend, district's required to offer it. We know that's a. Now, they, again, the children are not required to attend. The district's required to offer it. We know that was an issue last year. And many of the children, uh, did not take the summer reading, didn't come to summer reading camp that was offered to them. So we want them to be there. So that is another issue that, that you're going to hear some angst about, I think, in the spring, we're all going to hear. I don't know if the legislature will be willing to push some of that off. It's a chance that you may see low attendance at math camp this first summer. Because there's not a promotion requirement with the math bill like is the reading. The reading, you know, as we get closer and closer to that becoming a requirement, you're going to see, obviously, that really become more intense. The other thing with the math, elementary task force, so they've met online a couple of times. But this meeting in, in January where they're all going, they're going to meet in person for the first time, so it'll be very important because that will cause the quarterly meetings. Now, we've had the quarterly meetings, but you know, most of the people in there are local school folks. And so it's really difficult for them to meet in the summer. Long-term, and I don't want to say this the right way, because I want, I want Dr. Anderson to decide, work with that committee. But long-term, one of the things we think they might do is that it says quarterly meetings. It doesn't say that they all have to be equal quarterly meetings. So I think they may end up like in the summer, having a long meeting, it might even be multiple days. And then having maybe one of those, you know, this one's really before most of the schools start back. And then the other two meetings might be webinar meetings, because the teachers, we're hearing that, that's really hard on them to pull them out of the classroom in a quarter. And then the last thing I'll say about that is that we will soon be looking for new members of the math committee again. Because unlike the literacy task force, the math task force, um, is a two-year term. They can be appointed for a second two-year term, so they can serve up to four years. But initially, some of them have to rotate off because it says they're supposed to be, you're not supposed to lose the whole committee every four years. So, so they've technically, they got appointed. We had our first meeting, I think, in June. So some of them have already served one quarter of their time. And by this time next year, we'll have to have new appointments for half the people on the task force. I understand why the legislature wanted to do that. They wanted to keep fresh blood coming in. But that also will create a little bit of a disjointed churn if you are constantly seeing that change. So essentially, it's going to give them one year where you have a committee of, of the, the full committee can work together. And then the next year, half the committee will be new. And then you'll have a year for the whole committee to work together, and the next year, half the committee will be new again. So I think that eventually could create some, some dynamic problems for us. But anyway, you're, the short answer is, yes, we feel good about the timeline, the structure moving, and that we are, again, coming back together to that confluence where everything will be on the timeline. But, but the initial timelines, we, we did miss some. With full knowledge of the sponsors, what's going on?
Well, and then, um, another question, and I know y'all got deep into this last time, and you don't know how bad I wanted to be here to enter into and listen, learn, and engage, but, um, are, are struggling schools? And, and I know they have another label, but I would prefer to call them struggling schools. Then we asked for the list of the struggling schools who had been struggling schools for three or more years. And Mr. Markham sent that to us. And thank you so much for that. So I guess my question is, and this is absolute praise for OSI and everything that they do, and AMSTI, and ARI, and, um, all the other parties that are in service center. They do amazing work. But all that said, we have some schools who have been on that list for way too long. And, and so we either need to pour more resources into what we've got that's working, I would say, or we need to do above and beyond. And then as I was thinking through this just a minute ago, I remember when, at our previous retreat, I think when she said, Tracy brought up the retreat, our previous retreat, when we had that panel discussion, and I believe it was OSI, ARI, AMSTI, and our math improvement office. On the panel, they seemed to, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but they seemed to say that sometimes with some schools, maybe all schools, there need to be some non-negotiables. Like they can go in and they can work and they can recommend, but they can't force a school or the school's leadership to adopt something, right? And so how, but then when it falls apart, they're called back in again. So I don't know what the answer is, but it frustrates me when I see schools who are on that list year after year after year. And I don't have the answer. And Dr. Mackey, um, I even pulled out this, I know, you know, it's like we find these old laws, but the failing schools intervention law, where it basically says that as a final step, when insufficient or no improvement is determined by the state board of education is evident, the state superintendent is required to intervene and to appoint a person or persons to run the day-to-day operation. I don't know, I, you know, I don't know about whether that's the best approach. But I would just say maybe we need to think outside of the box for these schools that have been struggling. And how and what can we do to, to better assist, and mostly the students? I mean, my, my heart goes out to the students who are in schools who continue to struggle, and it doesn't seem to, there doesn't seem to be any improvement. So I, I'd love to hear what y'all think. You were here for the discussion.
We had discussions last month, and not to this quote Ms. Bell, but one of the things was Bell directed towards Superintendent Mackey was, what are you doing about? I think that might be a quote. And so you weren't here to emphasize, to support her, but I don't, didn't hear any dissent on the board about that. And the concept of schools who are failing versus those who have failed was discussed. You choose a different term than is in the legislature, but there's also the aspect of those school, those individuals, students and their parents who enrolled in schools that are not performing appropriately have some options. And perhaps we need to make certain those parents are appropriately and adequately and legally and officially notified of their options. Because if we found some places that are continually failed and parents knew that they could move their child, transportation's guaranteed, and it's no recrimination on them, they might do that, and it might put some people out of business.
Well, in line with that, um, one thing that I thought about as you were talking is that we know that we had the list of 15 from the governor's office. But when I went back and looked at the A through F when it came out, like week before last, it was obvious that maybe some of those had moved off. But I know when we had the presentation from, uh, Dr. Shields, she mentioned that we had the 79, you know, we had some under comprehensive support. But then a total of maybe, don't let me misquote you, 500 when you talk about targeted support. So am I, am I accurate when I say that somewhere around there?
We had about 637 ATS I identified schools for 2018. And at the time, the new ATS I, TSI schools were not public. I think we got about 350 of those.
Okay. So you can see the numbers continue to escalate. So what had come up last month is that we were hiring more personnel. But I'm thinking as we do that, it needs to be more targeted as to what does the plan look like to go out and assist the schools? You know, I can say I'm going out and I'm working with you, and I mean, the slide presentation was great about going in, but what are we actually doing? Are we able to see a plan? And then after you're there for a couple of months, what progress have we seen? How do we identify progress? You know, it's one thing, we can go and do something and have a plan, but if it's not implemented to fidelity, it's not going to work. So I'm just wondering, as we continue to work, we're doing some things, but what do we need to perhaps alter or do differently? So that, that's one thing I'm putting out there. And in line with that, I know we were talking at lunch about reading. Even as we look, uh, this short, you did a great job back in the spring of presenting everything we were doing for reading, which was great. And it's obvious, a lot's going out. I know people from ARI came to my college and presented to us on the science of reading, which is very helpful. But then I often wonder, do we actually have a plan? We're doing a lot, but outlining this is what we do at this level. Because we have so many moving parts, but when do they get connected? I just don't see the consistency of planning to make sure that something is going to happen. That, that's just, and that's just my interpretation as you say that.
And my question is, if they're on the struggled, struggling school list, is there a point? And Dr. Shields, you're just going to have to stand up.
Yes.
First of all, kudos for, congratulations.
For your promotion, yes.
And so thank you for that. We're very happy, and now come on up.
Welcome to the table.
So is there a point where you are going in and your team is going in, doing everything possible? And I am still an absolute believer, leadership at the local school can drive a school forward or leave it floundering or move it backwards. But is there a point, you never give up because we have kids there?
That's right.
But is there a point where we need to step in and intercede and get their attention for the sake of the students?
Potentially. And there's a juxtaposition because you look at schools that have been on the list that we're talking about a number of times. Um, there's, you know, I was sharing with my team the other day, look at, these are the number of schools that have been on the failing AAA list for six, seven, eight years.
Yeah.
However, there's some irony there because those schools are also not a CSI school. Which means that they are not receiving the same level of support as those schools that are CSI school. So they kind of fly below the radar. And so when that happens, we've got to figure out how, what's happening at these schools. We talked about last time. Sometimes it is a leadership thing because there's a moving needle of who is sitting behind that principal's desk. It's hard to build continuity and trust, um, and to get the community behind when that's happening all the time. But I still go back to, if this is a school where I see, and we do, I'm thinking of, you know, some of the schools I drive by every single day. And I see these children walk into school, and this is their community, and this is their home, and they love, you know, their parents went to school. We saw, and that was one of the things I could not share our last meeting because the data was not public yet. But when we were looking at potentially the governor, the turnaround schools, you know, I knew sitting here that of those 15 schools, all but two had come off that failing school list. But I couldn't say that because.
But where do they go when they come off? Now, once I get off the failing school list, then where do I go? Am I targeted support or am I complete? What, what happens? I'm off that list, but where do I go?
So tomorrow, I'm glad you asked that. Tomorrow, we're having our very first CSI exit celebration. Because we had so many schools, which is a wonderful, we, we felt like it was important to celebrate the schools who, during the toughest of times in my 32 years in education, were able to continue to grow and to not fall into that bottom 5%. So the model that we have is a gradual release model, where we continue to support them, um, watch the data, but also be available to them as thought partners and when those needs come up. But it is, this, this is something we do to promote OSI thing. I'm so glad you mentioned that, Dr. McCarthy. This, we certainly support those schools, but we do this in concert with the in-service center directors who have been amazing. Really a tremendous support. Now we have NTSS coaches. We've got ESL coaches. We've got, of course, ARI and AMSTI. So we have more capacity moving forward than we've ever done, we've ever had to really create hubs of support across the state that we can better align support and build muscle with one another, because it's been, it has been very difficult, obviously with the numbers of schools, to make sure that we're providing the systematic, uh, very explicit needs that the schools have and being stretched so thin.
Even though we have all of those components, who is responsible for designing the plan of how the improvement looks?
Thank you. Um, that is also something that, now, our office does support that. So we, we use the four domains of rapid school improvement as our model.
And I'm not saying support. Is there not anything, if I wanted to go to this school district that has five failing schools?
Sure.
Or struggling schools, that I could not go in and see that there has been a suggested maybe plan as to what they should do? Is there anything out there like that? I think that's what concerns me, and it may be. I just may not be aware of it.
Yes, that's, um, we ask that they align their continuous improvement plans with the four domains. So just, I won't get into the weeds of that, but we're working with these schools that are on specific lists. We use the research behind those four domains, which includes talent development.
Right.
You know, turn around leadership, that's right.
Are they trained on those domains, or you just say work with, okay? How does the training look, and when does it happen?
Now, that's probably one of our, um, I think that's probably been our most prized piece of the work.
Okay.
Is that we have a Jump Start Transformation Academy, and it's a, it's a 90-day rapid school improvement model. All CSI principals are encouraged. Uh, even the newly identified schools, we have, they're already registered for the sessions we have starting in January.
When did this began?
It started in 2017, 18.
Have people been participating?
Yes, ma'am.
What happens if they don't?
Yes, yes. Well, well, that goes back to the question you said. We, we cannot compel anyone to do anything. We can certainly provide the research behind it and the impact that goes along with it. But outside of that, um, but I will say this, if I could, we ask that all of the principals of CSI schools participate in the Transformation Academy. Um, I think many people tell you, uh, many people say that that's one of the, not to tutor on horn, but I mean, many will say, I wish I had gone through this as a first-year principal, because it really does create a community of practice where principals, as an example, um, have to really watch where they are for a period of weeks, really measuring their time and doing a time study. Is my work reactive, or is my work on the front side? Am I being distracted? So we really focus on where are you spending your time? But what we require for those principals that go through this program is there has to be a superintendent or district person part of this as well, so that they can support and certainly acknowledge that things are happening. But what came from that is we had a lot of superintendents and curriculum directors that said, hey, Melissa, we need a community of practice. We, we want a Transformation Academy for superintendents for districts. So two years ago, we started a district transformation academy. I think we've had about 147, um, 150 district leaders, superintendents participate in that. And that has just really been a nice offset of the initial Transformation Academy. So that, we have a series, you're asking them, do they know what they need to do? So we have a guide that I think I shared very briefly, but when a school is identified as a CSI school, these are your non-negotiables. I mean, these are the things that we expect. Now, can we make you do them? That might be another question altogether. But as a principal at a CSI school, this is the minimal. These are the things that we ask as a superintendent and district. These are the things. And then we, of course, um, are, the officer of school improvement, I'm struggling with my we and they. Um, this is what will be offered from the state in terms of very specific support. So we've done that not just for CSI schools, but also for the hundreds of schools that were identified for sub, subgroups.
So with the Transformation Academy, then with the principals, basically, uh, you have them learning where they go in, I guess, and they're more familiar with what they already should know, I guess, relative to content, instructional practices, data review, I mean, all, all of those kinds of things.
As well as questions to ask. Uh, we have a lot of principals that are.
How do you determine if they got it, if they have it, if they got it?
Well, that's, the beauty of the Transformation Academy is that there are, there's a four to six-week inter-session between each session. So that there are actual activities that happen. So we, we leave each session with, these are your marching orders. And so when we come back to the next session, that's where we really have that kind of accountability partnership where we hear. And we put them into breakout rooms so that not only do they share in their small groups, but they also have to share with other principals around the state. So it does create, as I said, a community of practice. So that is, that is our support system, is that they participate. We'll make five to six weeks or four to six weeks later to hear how it's going. And then, um, we always follow up afterwards. But what happens is after this Transformation Academy, after this process, then we've established the, the buckets of these four domains. And as we are providing support to them using that language, it's already hopefully a part of their A-team, is what we call it, strategy that they are creating.
Okay. So if I went to one of my districts, what would I ask for? The point, what'd you say it's called? I know the support of the four, four domains. What would I go in and say, well, superintendent so-and-so? Because I'm close to my superintendent. I know we have these failing schools, and I know the state has been working with you. I know we have these failing schools and I know the state has been working with you. May I please see your, what do I call it?
All of this is.
So, you're tying it into the CIP?
Absolutely.
That's what you're doing?
Yes, yes, yes. What we found is, and I, you know, as a district person, I was over CIP, so I remember the first time. But I also remember.
I was too, yes.
I remember being that teacher and I don't know if my former principals are watching, but you know, I was a, I was a high school English teacher and like, hey, Melissa, we got you a sub. We need you to write the CIP and I did. And then it was beautiful and no one saw it. So, what we, if this is truly your living document, certainly these four domains should be housed in that so that when you, and that's what I think I shared at the ASB meeting last week or so, when a board member or a stakeholder or someone is in the building, that CIP, that output piece is really should be driving what's happening in that school and these are your look-for's. So, when you're in the classroom.
Right.
If wait time, if math manipulatives or math discourse is something that you see on that plan, then these are the questions you should be asking.
So, aligned with that, with the CIP, I also should be able to see how ARI is involved, all of these entities, all of that should be written in there, the in-service and everything you're talking about. But we're talking about a lot.
Yeah.
But I just wanna, I wanna see it working, that's, that's the thing.
We do not want four different plans floating around. So, we, and having been on the other side of that, we really tried to align those resources and those plans.
Okay.
Ms. Martin was reminding me, we, we also meet with the superintendents and the district leads to have those calibration meetings to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Okay.
We also, we talked last time as well, in some of these schools, there's multiple people coming into their schools. And so, it's, and I'm talking about community partners, I'm talking about state partners. So, we want to make sure that we're not a burden to these schools who are coming in.
I understand that, but we are accountable because we're the one who's supposed to be providing the leadership of these districts.
That's right.
What's in place if you happen to go to a school and you're not seeing the progress? What is the next step? You know, if you've sent someone in from State Department or multiple years and you're still not seeing a change? What's the next plan of action? I think I asked that last time. You know, how do you know that what you're doing is effective? You're not seeing the results here and then if it's not, what's the next step?
And, and that's a multiple measure kind of piece, we're going to have to look at so many things. But generally speaking, if we are offering so many response supports financially, human resources, and either one, they are not utilized, I'm choosing my words carefully, not utilized in a way that's helpful or they're dismissed. Or, or if we come and then this particular support is, thank you, thank you, thank you, and we'll come back in two weeks and a year happened, and then nothing happened, we came back in two weeks. Those are conversations that, yeah, we certainly take back, but in terms of punitive action, that is not, that is not an area which there is all.
There is no accountability.
Outside of meeting with the district and saying, and holding them accountable. We don't hold back funds, you know, someone says, well, can you hold back money? That's, that's not what, at least that's not what the Office of School Improvement does.
But do you see that as a missing piece?
I can't say never, Dr. Chestnut, because I have seen schools in my tenure at the department. There's one school in particular that we're working with that has been CSI priority list since I started and this year they were not. I have seen schools that when they get the right leaders in place and change that issue, so, yeah.
Given importance, Dr. Chestnut, that we really pay very close attention to group calls analysis and do those audits and have those intentional conversations with our central office or district leadership to make certain that communication is in place. I know that OSI is really big on forming those relationships in order to be partners with the schools in which they serve, but when those type things come up, you have to make certain that you're engaging. And that's where we come in as well to be partners with OSI, going to the school district to say, this is occurring and this is not occurring. Unfortunately, if those patterns continue, you're going to see them roll to a more rigorous state of support. And with COVID, we've not had to see that because we've been offered extensions through our ESSA plan. When you think of your CSI, your ATSIs and you think of all of those schools, and we really were on track to name those CSI R schools moving this year. But because of our opportunities that were presented to all states, we were able to push that back. So, we won't be naming those until next year. So, within that plan, it's already identified, when we talk about what are we doing? What are our next steps, was differentiating and doing instruction? And what are those pieces are, it's in our ESSA plan. It's telling us exactly what we would do.
In the ESSA plan, okay.
Yes, ma'am, it'll tell us our next steps, what do we need to define and put in place for those schools that after they've worked with them and there's still no movement, they will become a CSI R school. And when they become that, what does that look like? What does it mean? And what are those intentional pieces that the state is going to do to provide what they say is more rigorous support? And they tell us examples and we have different communities of practice that our people around the department are participating with in order to help guide that work and determine what it would look like prior to us naming those schools.
And this is new, we've not had this before. So, the CSI R schools, we never had like what's next? So, that's an important distinction to know.
We just had this conversation today, she was naming, I was like, that's what, we gotta get a plan for CSI R.
Exactly, yes. But I heard you say there are some principals that might not take advantage of the academies. Then do you go, you might not be able to do anything, do you go to their superintendents and say? And then the superintendent doesn't anything. But the thing is, you need, and I've been talking to many teachers and they're saying, a lot of our teachers are out there are not teaching the standards. Well, ACAP is definitively based on the standards and they go, well, you know, and if you're being taught in these academies on what a walkthrough looks like and what are look-for's, you would know if what that teacher's teaching is a standard. And I hate to say it, but I think there's a lot of principals and superintendents out there that don't know what even the, you know, the standards look like. We found out that the boards don't, I think we can filter it down. So, until we really bring it to the bottom line and why it's not fair to these kids, something's got to change. We could be bringing everything possible, but if they're not teaching to the standards or they're not accepting what needs to be done, it's all for naught.
That's really interesting because I think 2019, we started this training for local boards and most of them were dealing with the CSI schools. I did it and pulled Mr. Rowland in and we partnered, went to Birmingham and trained them and it was just an awesome training. The next year, the three of us tag teamed, Melissa, myself and Mr. Rowland. She just did that training again, I think you may have attended that one in Birmingham. The responses that we're getting from local board members and knowing the questions to ask when they're talking to their superintendents and all about data that's available to them and how they can help determine the improvement and how their schools and their, their leadership.
Right.
How they're doing. So, that's a part of the process, is just creating that educational opportunity so everyone can know what's available. She was able to pull up and just showed them tons of data about their schools.
It was powerful. I had some local school board members that attended and came back very complimentary and they didn't know, they didn't know there was AMSTAD there to support their schools. They didn't know that there was ARI and the in-service center. They didn't know what an in-service center was. And so, it was very powerful. I would encourage you to continue to do those sessions. I think it's very powerful when your local school board members and they're turning over all the time.
They know what to ask.
But they know what to ask and know what to look for and know what's available. So, I applaud that effort.
That's going to help us in making certain that principals are on board and they're not turning down opportunities that are made available to them because when they know that someone can come and ask, well, what about this, what have you done with this? So, just that builds capacity. What we don't want to do is create opportunities to push them away because at the end of the day, these are our kids and we want to make certain that we're working in a partnership with them to provide the support that's necessary. And we think communication is that path. And unfortunately, we have a lot of lists that are alphabets, you know, and we are hoping that we can change that message with the, and I'm not gonna call them failing schools, I'm not gonna call them, I'm gonna say the AAA Alabama Accountability Act, that's what it is. And it's just the bottom percent of schools across the state. And honestly, I tell this when I'm talking to anyone, any audience. If every school performed at 95%, I'm gonna have to add four, five, six decimals out to get the bottom percent to say that you're on that list. And I'm just gonna have to do that.
That would be a wonderful problem.
I mean, we want a problem, but I mean, they would still rename that. So, yes, we're hoping that it's not an on-all situation, but you know, we offer that support to them. And I think Dr. Reynolds asked that question, that what are we doing to have those schools know what opportunities are available for them?
For the parents.
With parents.
What I made reference to is the law provides parental rights. I believe in local control, local schools, but I believe more strongly in parents. And if the parents are assigned to a school that's not performing adequately, then I think that we need to formalize the way those parents know what their options are.
We have.
And I mean, so that we document if, as, and a school in my district, I go visit them and those parents may not know, I don't have to go here. I can go across the mountain and they're gonna take my child in a bus there. And they don't know that. They might should know that, but there's not a formal proof that they've been told about.
Well, what, the, the process that we have for informing parents of their rights under the Alabama Accountability Act, first of all, you know, we publish that information on our website. And being that it's on the website, we also have the documents that are there. We then turn around and send a personal memo to each one of those superintendents and we give them the template that's used. Every parent in that school must be sent a letter notifying them. And those letters, once they, if they opt to do whatever their options are, that pile of letters.
The parent sign, there's, I just think about what my mom and dad have known. If I were in an inadequate school. And I use that as a measure, not what I would know, not what my daughter would know. But they may not have known that they didn't let, have to let me go to that school.
That's in there, the options are there and I'll share that with you, but the options are there and they're able to check the option, if they're gonna stay in that school, go to another school. They sign it and then those forms are sent back up here. As a matter of fact, Leah probably wanted to throw us out. She was the gatekeeper of all of those forms. We've now, this year, moved it to accountability, so they will be, they probably didn't know that.
They did.
Okay. Right, and so they, they will be the gatekeeper of those forms as they come in. And these are the forms from all of the failing schools where they notify the actual parent. And it's on there, but the thing you do have, that you have community schools and when you have community schools, those, some of those same parents went to that school and they want their kids at their school. So, they will look at the services and the opportunities that are available for them and they opt to stay in their schools. And that's when we need to make sure that leadership understands the supports that are available from the department, you know, supports and technical assistance to make sure that they're getting what they need.
And Mobile County, when they did it and did the transferring and all, within three years and they documented, those kids went back to their original school because that was their school of comfort. And Mobile County, it's wonderful about their schools are in the midst of neighborhood. And so, they, I mean, they had that opportunity, but they, that was that driving force to get them. They wanted to go back home.
Well, if you don't want an education, you go where you want to go.
That's not it.
But I'm saying if your, if your predisposition is over grandma and mama did, that's your choice. But there needs to be clear that when you make that choice, you're putting your child at a disadvantage.
Well, and Ms. Martin.
You could be. I'm telling you, based on my experience with my siblings, you can make those choices. But the other question I want to ask you is in the control, there's a lot of COVID by it. I don't want to use all the acronyms, that's not being spent. Are we exercising that prerogative under school improvement to redirect their plan? To see that plan is actually addressing the most saving needs in each school?
Yes, with their ESSA funds, it's managed through our federal programs in my areas. And being that it's managed through the federal programs, the, every one of their plans were actually approved by, at a minimum of three individuals to make certain. And we have a COVID dashboard that's on our website and many people will look at it and they will say that the money is not, has not been spent where it needs to be. But those are drawdown measures. We have a set of money that have already been obligated and the expiration date was this year, September 30th. And being that that was the case, we have until December 31st in order to pull those funds down. So, to say that we're not on track with spending those monies based on what the districts have identified in their plans, that would not be the case. We are on track, what we're doing now with this pocket that just ended, I guess I should say, September 30th, that they have until December to pull down, we're encouraging them to go ahead and draw down their funds. So, encouraging them to draw down, that's why that dashboard is probably still showing more funds.
And you know why I'm asking, because I get approached by the press and the community over, why is there a billion something dollars and we're not helping, we're not improving education? They ask me, what's happening? And I said, I don't know, but I'll check.
There we go.
That's what I just did.
Thank you so much.
Can I mention, can I just ask one question? Because it relates to something we were talking about before and I just want clarification because my understanding of the law may be incorrect. And so, if it is, I want to make sure.
If it's incorrect and I don't know, I have two legal people that I look like this and like that.
I had some parents in, in my district who were, whose children attended a failing school. They wanted to go to another school, another school system because there was only, you know, one. So, they had to go to another school system. They applied for one school system, they rejected them. They applied to another system, it rejected them. And so, they said, we have no choice. We're supposed to have a choice, we don't have a choice. And so, is that now changed in the law?
Willing to accept the child.
So, okay, so the school system, they don't have a choice if the school system that they choose to attend says, we won't accept you?
Well, the first choice they get, Dr. McCarty, is that the district identified school that they have kind of diverted the children to. So, that's the first thing that they would do.
But within the same system?
Yes.
See, this, this is not possible.
Right.
Because they just have one middle school, one high school.
And then a lot of times when you reach out to a better district, they will say.
They say, no.
You know, we don't have any more seats available at that grade level.
Sometimes they don't even say that.
And that's where the other piece comes in there and I just have to be honest, I'm looking at my trace to make certain that I am correct. It's that, that's where that tax credit comes in and they have that option to go to another school if it's a private school and they're able to do that form to certify their attendance into an actual failing school and they will get that opportunity.
But once again, they must be accepted at a private school. Correct. I mean, the private school, it might not want that, you know.
When did this happen, Dr. McCarty, is this recent? I mean, is there, because I'm saying there's that, this is something specific, if you can kind of email us that.
Yeah, I don't want to name schools.
I guess it's a name school, I mean, well, I guess it's.
Well, if you want to see me act, we may be talking to a parent and have guide the parents of what other opportunities could be available for them, I'm more than happy. We get parent calls constantly, whenever the list goes out, we are constantly getting parent calls and we deal with them, so.
And would they pay for transportation if it's a different system?
Most of the time.
Most of the time.
It just depends.
Because that, that's a problem, they don't have the ability to transport.
Yeah, many districts that allow out-of-district enrollment don't provide transportation. And they'll also like charge tuition if they allow you to come in.
Well, send their policies.
Yeah, it's, there are policies they have to say, this is our out-of-district enrollment policy.
I'm just looking for options.
Well, send them to us so you don't have to look for options for them, just give them my naming number. I'm more than happy to speak with any of them. I'm more than happy to speak with any of them and help them to see what options under that law are available for them. More than happy.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your new role. What's the transition plan? To ensure that?
I'm going to start with this. We understand that this is a heavy lift, Dr. Chestnut. And the first thing we want to do is to make sure we support our employees to make certain that they are really successful. So the very first thing we did at this department was identify a mentor for Dr. Shields. And that mentor is sitting in the back, Shantia Washington. She's going to serve as the departmental mentor to make certain those processes, procedures and everything that are internally, she's here to support her through that. And then we're working, we have some other individual mentors, this is one of them, to make certain that we're here for her, that we can slowly release her from. And that's a hard pill for Dr. Shields to kind of pull her away from OSI to a certain degree. And that's part of our work that we're doing with her. And we've already started that work with HR to get an interim or get that position classified for OSI so we can have a replacement. And then from there, it's just training to make certain that she's abreast of everything that's going on. She's had separate meetings with every one of the sections to understand where they are, how we connect those dots. And the biggest piece is what's not working?
Right.
What's not working? We're not going in to say that everything we have in place is just, we pick up the book and start walking from there. We're doing an assessment to see what's working, what are the needs? Here's data. Where's this pointing us? So we are very intentional with what it's going to look like to move this work forward.
What's happening on the LDA side? So the same, you're, this is twofold, isn't it what I'm hearing you say?
Yes.
And I'm still coordinating. The OSI will be working with me. I did want to, if it's okay, to revisit you, so what do you do when in school? If I could just go back to that. And I just want to say, in my six years in this role, with the very few exceptions, I have never experienced that where someone just put a wall up and said, we're not doing that. As I don't even know that I've ever heard anyone say that. It is, it is about the relationships. And many times, it's about us staying until eleven o'clock at night to get transcripts done or get kids registered or helping them get the work done. But he, you know, when, when folks look at numbers, and you said that yourself, there's always going to be that, that bottom, you know, six percent. We have schools that you may look at and say, wow, they, they only have a sixty-one. Well, they, they had a fifty two report cards ago. They grew eleven points in two report cards. So we look at it, if we can keep that trajectory, that is something to celebrate, to come up that many points in one or two report cards is really incredible. And so we look at what did you do well? So with our group tomorrow, with our new CSI exiting schools, that was one of the questions we were asking them to share with our new schools. What did you do? Tell us some of the things that you felt were instrumental in exiting this campus. And as a brand-new principal or superintendent who's serving a CSI school, what do you wish someone had told you? And we're really going to use that information to continue to onboard our new CSI schools. But in our experience, it's about, they, they, they're going to shut down. And I would too, when someone comes in with a very compliant mindset, that here's the twelve things that if you do at every school, you're going to improve. And they look at me and say, well, that's not going to work at my school.
Right. Well, that's why you need the.
The differentiation of supports.
Continues to improvement plan should be individually school-driven for what is their need, good and bad.
Yes. And as long as, as long as, I think, and I feel very certain we will, we continue, and I say we as a department, continue to differentiate supports for schools based on data, needs, and the community. I, I feel certain we'll continue to grow. For those schools that either are reluctant, that's a conversation completely outside of that, but not a conversation that shouldn't be had.
While you're talking about correlations, one of the things several, many younger or newer, not necessarily younger, newer school board members talked about was the need to close or combine schools and the relative size of the schools and the ability to meet with the new CCR requirements. And I'm certain you're doing correlations with size and performance. Because at some point in time, the difficult decision about closing schools or combining schools for effectiveness has to be made. And if there's a school system that's so small, they only have one school, that's a sad event. But that's a very small school system. But that's permitted under state law. But are we looking at school size and the ability to comply with CCR and advising local school systems and local school boards about the viability of the size school and what they should do about it? That's a local decision.
It is a local decision, but we do have those intentional conversations about program expansions and opportunities. And what we do say, moving forward, unfortunately, we do have some schools that are small right now. But moving forward, as we onboard new schools, we have criteria in place that we look for two hundred and fifty students. And that's across the board. When Ethan is getting their applications and signing school codes and all of that, we're looking at, at a minimum of two hundred and fifty schools.
For grades nine through twelve or for what?
That's a school. That's how we define a school.
Nine through twelve.
Yes, sir. Depends on what they turn in. So it could be, it could be a K through twelve.
Yes.
But to get a school designation code, it's two hundred and fifty students. Now, we have some legacy schools.
Yes.
I know you and I talked about, we had one that was down to under seventy-five kids. And it, and it was a K six. I think it was just nearly impossible to run a school like that. Local school board did finally close it. So we, we still have some legacy schools that are under two hundred students. And we have some charter schools. We, we strongly encourage that charter schools not open without two hundred and fifty students. But as you know, the commission can override us on that. It's just a recommendation. So they have, they have approved several schools to open with less than two hundred and fifty. So I think the smallest one has a hundred and thirty students, but.
I have one more comment, Doctor. No, I was going, I'm talking, I'm trying to look at you. Yeah, so you can acknowledge me. May I talk?
You always get.
Of course I do. I, you know, we, we do get in the talking deep and serious about our, our AAA schools. But I do want to applaud the schools that came out that had all As on their report card. So we need to celebrate when they do well. And, you know, and I think like, you know, I mentioned Sarah Lynn, even though I, it used to be mine, I'm still going to call it mine. But we need to, and then they have qualities. And I know it was always hard to, when someone said, well, you should see what school A is doing. And you want to go, and we tell you to. But, and it is a different setting and what needs. But it would be good for us to understand, not so much A, B, C, D, but what is it that makes, to me, the climate of a school? The leadership at the school.
Yes.
The standing in the midst of the community and saying, this is our place. You can do amazing things. And so I think those are what A schools can help us look at. Not necessarily, you know, all the, you know, drop-down, drill-down kinds of things. So, you know, but I do want to, when we always seem to be worried, and we are so worried about our students in these lower-level schools, that we need to applaud our wonderful schools that made As on their report card.
They publicize themselves, you don't have to do that.
No, 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 no. We need to tell, celebrate that we are proud of them and that we applaud them. And they can brag all they want to, but we need to brag on them also.
We also have related to that. So the legislature this year brought back, he gave us some funding. I think it's a quarter million dollars for the school recognition program.
Okay.
And so that, that's just literacy, right? But it's based on those students, Angela, so she's moving on.
I'm sorry.
She's working on the school recognition program.
The legislative recognition program.
So a certain amount goes to the schools that scored the highest, scored As, and then the schools that increased by a letter grade. And so we're, I mean, that, the list is obviously public. But after the first of the year, we'll be doing some official notification with those schools, recognizing them through a board process, and then they'll get a little money to go. It's not a lot of money, but it's not, it's more like you say, it's the recognition. So that is coming.
Top twenty-five and most improved. I, I miss what he said, top twenty-five.
One more question. Melissa, you have done such awesome work with NBCT. And we had sort of slumped down with national board certified, you know, and weren't getting that many. And, and then suddenly you took charge and zoom, it just has gone sky high. And so will you continue to work with national board certified teachers? And that program?
I don't want to make any commitments. Let us talk through that a bit.
We will not drop it.
We're not dropping it, I just can't say.
If that one drops its cracks, those two people there will be after me. So we won't.
I'm celebrating all the positive work that you've done. And, and of course, I don't want to overload you and burn you out. But, but I just, I really, you've done such great work with it. And so I'd love to see that continue if at all possible.
We are fourth in the country.
We are.
That's why she's doing that celebration.
And you've got the number one school in the nation in the state of Alabama.
Thank you, P. White. Yes, that's right. Yes, we had, we had several schools that were identified for their high percentage of NBCT. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, and thank you for coming to our board meeting.
I appreciate it.
So we can ask you questions.
Jackie, do you have any more questions? Dr. Chestnut, do you have any more questions? You're fine. McCarty, do you have one more question? Not a chance. Without objection, we are adjourned.